Recording in progress.
Since Judge Throer here, so I'm going to say order in the court, but that's probably not the right thing. So, welcome to Lewisville, Colorado City Council Meeting of Tuesday, October 17, 2023. And I'm Mayor Dennis Maloney calling the meeting. Order? Can we have a roll call vote? Roll call, please. No votes?
Mayor Maloney?
Here.
Mayor Portemfahy?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hefner?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Would you all stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge to allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next up is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the oath of office for Ward Two, Councilmember Judy Kern. I'm going to invite Judge Throer to come up and Judy Kern to join him.
Don't want to do it twice.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Judy Kern.
I, Judy Kern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Lewisville, Colorado.
The ordinance and Home Rule Charter of the City of Lewisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern, please join us at the dais. All right. Next, we'll move on to item number four, public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is a chance for anyone to speak on any item not on the agenda or any other items on the consent agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name and if you're a Lewisville resident. First up, we have Ally Garvin.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Ally Garvin, and I've been a Lewisville community member for four years. I live on West Harper Street off of Via Appia across from Cottonwood Park. I'm here today to share with you an extremely dangerous experience I had crossing Via Appia this month. On September 27th, at 3:48 PM, I was walking with my family across Via Appia in the crosswalk to go to Cottonwood Park. Two cars driving north on Via Appia drove straight through the crosswalk back to back without stopping. To be clear, there were three adults, my one-year-old in a stroller and a three-year-old in a scooter, in the middle of the road. And these cars did not see us. They passed within ten feet of my three-year-old with him patiently waiting with his uncle. I started yelling and waving my hands, but this did not get the attention of the vehicles. I cannot emphasize enough how upsetting and dangerous the situation was. And as terrifying as it was, it was not my first experience in this specific crosswalk getting to the park. In the last year, I've had a dozen experiences like this, though this was the most intense. It is not uncommon for cars driving north to blast through this crosswalk unaware of pedestrians. Because of the curve in the road and the position of the trees, it seems that drivers going northbound aren't able to see pedestrians until about like 40 feet in the crosswalk. This crosswalk is the primary entry point to Cottonwood Park for the Park Adelo Zingadar Mobile Home Community, West Harper Street, Griffith Street, and Franklin Street neighborhoods. There are at least 50 kids under the age of 12 in this area who utilize this crosswalk to go to the park. We need to prioritize safety enhancement funding for this crosswalk based on the obstruction of view for northbound drivers. Crossing lengths at the Cottonwood Park Crossing would at a minimum grab the attention of drivers to slow down and pay attention. But I believe something also needs to be done to slow down the speed at which drivers approach this curve and approach this crosswalk. We know that there's funding available for Via Appia since Lewisville has recently poured money into the beautification of the median in front of the rec center, whereas I feel like there's funding that needs to be moved towards safety for pedestrians on Via Appia. Beauty is definitely important, but safety is essential. So, safety needs to be prioritized at the Cottonwood Park-Via Appia Crossing before a child or a dollar hit by a car. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to make a public comment? All right. Is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to make public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Do any councilmembers have any pertinent items not on the agenda which they would like to report? Okay. City managers report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three quick items for you. First of all, I'm proud to say that Caleb Betzel and Kevin Frye will be presenting the internal decarbonization plan that you all approved last meeting at the Mountain Town Climate Solutions Summit in Vail tomorrow. So, I'm proud that they're going to be representing us up there and telling that story. Also proud to report that Rob Zakiro, our Community Development Director, was just appointed to the statewide wildfire and resiliency code board as a representative. We felt that we need to have a stake there, and so I'm really glad that Rob is happy to serve in that role there. Last, I want to make sure you know that you've talked about and asked about a use tax rebate program for insulation permits. We have actually been doing some work on that since your last request and even before that, actually. And we have that scheduled for first reading November 28, second reading December 5. So, just an informational piece there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up is regular business. We have a presentation of, A, is presentation of findings, wildfire hazard and risk assessment of Lewisville Public Lands. Just so we're all on the same page, this is an informational item and it's an update. So, it's not a resolution or anything like that. So, who is?
I'll start.
Thank you.
That's okay. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel?
Adam Blackmore, Director of Parks Recreation and Open Space. We're going to have a litany of introductions here, as I'll be leading into an introduction of our open space superintendent. But I did want to provide a brief project background for what you'll be seeing tonight. This project and this presentation has been in the works for around a year. It was put out through a competitive request for bid process, and we enlisted the services of Linker Corporation and the Ember Alliance, who you'll be hearing from this evening. I'd reiterate that while our open space superintendent is with us tonight and will be speaking to you, this was a entire public lands evaluation and risk assessment. So, it also encompasses parks, it encompasses our water treatment facilities, and it incorporates our ditches as well as part of the review. It has been a collaborative effort, so I would like to just give a little kudos to Public Works and to our fire department and to community development for all of their efforts in this as well. Ember will be telling you a little bit about what we have done since the, since we retained the services of Linker Corporation up until now operationally, preemptively, working towards some of the mitigation recommendations or proposed recommendations that you'll hear this evening. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ember Brignall, our open space superintendent.
Hi, City Council. Thanks for being here this evening to hear about this important topic. As Director Blackmore shared, my name is Ember Brignall. I'm the open space superintendent for the City of Lewisville. And before I hand this presentation over to our consultants, I really want to ensure counsel and the community that this work is really important to us, and we're very proud of the work that we're sharing with you tonight and the work that's being presented tonight. I also wanted to emphasize that while we have been collaborating with our consultants for the past year, we haven't been waiting for a perfect answer. We have been working to implement fuels mitigation throughout 2023. There is information in more detail in your packet covering that topic, but I just wanted to highlight a few of those numbers before we introduce the presenters. And so, in 2023, for open space, we have completed over 400 acres of fuel reduction on open space. This is a very significant number. We have hired three contractors to help us meet these objectives. I think you're all very familiar with the grazing contractors up to this point, but we have, we have one contractor who's managing grazing. If you've been out at Davidson Mesa or North Open Space, you've likely seen them. That has resulted in over 91 acres of fuel reduction. We also have goats grazing at North Open Space. You've seen them in a wooded area where it's really hard for us to use mowers or other equipment, so the goats are very effective in that area. And they have completed 30 acres of fuel mitigation. And our third contractor is a mowing contractor that we've been working with since the Marshall Fire to mow in between open space and private property in select areas. So, that mowing ranges from 10 feet to 30 feet. And they have covered 130 acres of fuel mitigation. And in-house, this is my last statistic, in-house, we have also continued to work on our trail corridor mowing. And if you had the opportunity to read the plan, you'll see that's an effective fuel break. So, the trail edge in combination with the width of the trail really serves as a successful fuel break for people to enter and fight the fire and also to drop the fire down. So, that is something we've done for the past 10 years. We continue to do it, and it's about 146 acres of fuel reduction. So, all of this information can be found in your packet in more detail. I'd also really encourage you and the community to look at the link in your packet that goes to the story map. We recently put together a story map that details all of the ongoing efforts of open space. We're hoping to keep that live and up to date so the community can follow our efforts. It does have a nice feature. You can, you can type in your home address and see what the open space work is occurring near your home. We have polygons that show each of the treatment by mitigation options. So, it's a great tool to stay up to date with what we're doing. So, we're very proud of our 2023 efforts. We think it was really successful to complete 400 acres. We're excited to move into 2024. We are looking to take this assessment to really help prioritize where we are doing our mitigation efforts. So, the consultant will work through this, but we've identified areas of higher risk within the community. So, we would like to focus all of our efforts in those areas and then work down the list. We will also be using this plan to look at different mitigation opportunities that we haven't utilized yet to see how they fit in our program and make sure we're finding that balance between fuels reduction and open space stewardship and management. So, with that, I'm handing it over. We have two presenters tonight. On the screen, you can see Bill Sepransky. He's with Linker Corporation. And Meg, who just stepped to the podium, is another consultant with the Ember Alliance. Bill will be kicking off the first half of the presentation, followed by Meg. Thank you. Bill, just checking in to make sure you can hear us and are ready to present. Bill, it looks like your microphone's working, but we can't hear you.
Any change at all on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I think we're going to need, Bill, I think we're going to need you to run the presentation, if you don't mind sharing your screen. We seem to have an audio issue with the other computer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, sure thing. No problem. All right. Is that, are you seeing that or are you seeing not the full screen?
We're seeing it, but not in presentation mode, but we can certainly see it.
Okay. Let me, sorry, let me fix this one. Okay, how about that? Is that full screen now?
Perfect.
Great. Okay, sorry about that. All right. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Bill Sepransky. I work at Linker, and I'm here today with Meg Matonis with the Ember Alliance. And so, we're talking about the Lewisville wildfire risk assessment. And I just want to take a moment and just thank the community for trusting us with this really important project and also thank the community for engaging with us as a part of this project for our public meetings. And so, here on this slide, I'm showing those public open houses that we held in February and May of this, of this year, and then also our meetings with the Open Space Advisory Board, where we were able to engage and get good feedback on the project. And so, to kind of summarize the project quickly here, this is a wildfire hazard and risk assessment of Lewisville Public Lands, where we're identifying these risks and then also identifying mitigation opportunities across these public lands. And the purpose, of course, is to become more resilient for wildfire in the future. So, you know, we've, of course, finished our project here, like Ember had mentioned. This slide shows an outline of what we included as a part of this final report. So, today, we're really going to be focused briefly on Section Three, the wildfire risk assessment, and then Section Four, the mitigation assessment that Meg's going to step through in a little bit. And I also want to call attention to Section Five, where we provide community resources, you know, really based more for residents of, of Lewisville, whereas the rest of the report is really focused more on public lands and facilities. So, stepping into the risk assessment, we've got basically two major parts that we're going to be looking at that both come from wildfire behavior modeling. And we relied on the state of Colorado's wildfire behavior model for this risk assessment. This is work done by the Colorado State Forest Service and their contractors. And we use the outputs of that model that are burn probability and flame length. And that's kind of what I'm showing here right now. So, the burn probability, you can see that we've got, this is the likelihood of a fire occurring in a given area in Lewisville. And so, we can see that we have higher burn probabilities shown with those orange colors more along the western boundary of the city. And then we've got lower or medium burn probabilities in that kind of southeastern part of the city, and then lower burn probabilities everywhere else. The second part that I mentioned is flame length probabilities. And there's a lot going on in this map, so I'll kind of briefly summarize it. But first, I'll say that the flame length probability is kind of our general indicator for the severity or intensity of the fire. So, we use this as a part of our, as our risk framework for that component. And so, what this map is showing is the, the flame length heights that are more likely to occur across the city of Lewisville again. And so, what we can see is that in the upper right and upper and lower left corner especially, we have darker red colors indicating higher probabilities or higher likelihoods of those flame lengths occurring. And so, basically, for the city of Lewisville, given a lot of the grassland fuels, we're more likely to see flame lengths of two to four, four to six feet, with lower probabilities shown here of eight to 12 and greater than 12 feet. The second part of our risk assessment is the vulnerability, and that's where we look at the assets, the lands, the, the facilities that are part of this public lands analysis. And so, what we're showing here on this map are those lands and facilities that we consider. So, generally speaking, they're into three categories. Our public lands includes the open space and the city parks. And then, our city facilities includes buildings like the recreation center and the city services building, as well as the building you're all in right now. And then, the third component are the water facilities like the water treatment plants. So, those are shown here on this map. And what we did as a part of this risk assessment is that we use our hazard analysis coming from the wildfire behavior model and our vulnerability analysis that, that we just showed those components. We bring those together with basically susceptibility components to calculate our wildfire, our wildfire risk. And so, that's what we're showing here on this map. And again, you can see that in the darker red and orange colors, those show the higher wildfire risk. And so, we can see that, again, kind of along that western boundary and northern boundary of the city, we've got those higher wildfire risk scores and elements, basically. And so, we've compiled this into kind of an average wildfire risk score. And what we've shown here are the top 10 highest wildfire risk areas. So, as I mentioned, some of that risk occurs along that western boundary. So, we've got the Howard Berry Water Treatment Plant as the highest element. Then, we've also got some of the parks around North Open Space is also showing up as high risk. And then, Davidson Open Space and Danianovich also showing up as kind of a moderate risk. And then, finally, on this list, we've got the Coal Creek Trail as low risk. So, this is just kind of the snapshot. As I mentioned, we've got a full comprehensive list of all of these public lands that we assessed, included in the full report as well. And so, with that, I'll pass it over to Meg to discuss mitigation.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm trying to speak to you as well. You'll have to look at my back. My name is Meg Matonis. I'm a wildfire analyst for the Ember Alliance, and I've been a wildland firefighter with the Laramie County Sheriff's Office for eight years. I also have my PhD in forest ecology from Colorado State University. I usually try to avoid reading a narrative when presenting, but I wanted to make sure that I cover all my main points in the time allotted because it's such an important topic. I just have kind of a preamble before I get into the details of the slides. You can go to the first slide, Bill. But we'll be on this one for a little bit. Okay. Becoming a fire-adapted community requires a comprehensive approach and coordinated action to address shared risk. Fuel treatments on properties managed by the city of Lewisville, which is primarily what we cover in this report, are just one piece of the fire resilience puzzle. Partnerships between agencies, landowners, and homeowners are necessary for meaningful progress towards fire resiliency. I wish there was a clear guaranteed solution for mitigating wildfire risk so no one has to experience the tragic loss of homes that many of you suffered. There are several ways to modify the amount and arrangement of vegetation to potentially change fire behavior and create opportunities for firefighters to engage with wildland fire. And there are methods to reduce the susceptibility of structures to wildfire. But, as the report highlights, there are also trade-offs to all of these actions. And unfortunately, the truth is that there are no mitigation strategies that can optimize all values for public land and minimize wildfire risk at the same time. Social values, ecological impacts, feasibility, cost, and likelihood of success must be considered when deciding where to conduct different mitigation options. Also, unfortunately, there are a lot of limits to the effectiveness of fuel treatments. Fuel treatments are more likely to alter fire behavior under moderate fire weather conditions. Mitigation efforts are unlikely to stop urban conflagrations driven by extreme wind speeds and fires that produce prolific embers, because fuel treatments cannot prevent embers from blowing into treated areas or surrounding structures. To kind of illustrate this point, the wildfire partner program coordinator for Laramie County Sheriff's Office, Reina Eschleman, uses a really powerful analogy to relate wildfire risk mitigation to human health. So, people can do several things to reduce the risk of cancer: adequate sleep, exercise, healthy diet, and reducing exposure to toxic substances. However, even these combined actions cannot reduce someone's chance of getting cancer to zero. And the same can be said for wildfire mitigation. So, given the range of values provided by public lands, which include open spaces, recreation, wildlife habitat, beautiful views, and others, and then the uncertainty of wildfire occurrence and fuel treatment effectiveness, in the report, we recommend that the best framework for enhancing wildfire resilience in this community are actions that have co-benefits in addition to wildfire risk reduction. So, for example, restoring native grassland ecosystems that often burn with lower intensity than grasslands that are invaded by non-native grasses like cheatgrass or smooth broom will also create wildlife habitat and increase biodiversity. Taking steps to reduce the flammability of structures can reduce their susceptibility to wildfires while also while also reducing maintenance costs, heating and cooling costs, and water use. Okay, next slide. In the final report to the city, we present information on a suite of mitigation alternatives. And the ones that we highlight are prescribed burning, herbicide to manage some of these non-native grasses, grazing, seeding with native species, stewardship of prairie dog colonies, which actually, which actually create really high-quality fuel breaks, mowing, strategic management of woody fuels, and defensible space, structure hardening, and limited irrigation. We include suggestions for the types of properties where these treatments are appropriate, as you can see in this table. And we indicate where these treatments are likely to have the greatest chance of success. The report also includes a description and pros and cons of these methods that's based on scientific research and observations of wildfire behavior in areas treated by different methods. Next slide. Thank you. For each of the general mitigation alternatives, we then provide more specific guidance for how the city can implement these different treatments. And we have maps of locations where we recommend these treatments be applied. And throughout the project, I would make recommendations to Amber, and she would say, "We're already doing that." So that was, that was exciting. The city of Louisville is already engaged in many of the activities that we recommended. And Amber already went through many of those. Another one, she didn't mention, but we know is ongoing and that we highlight in the report, is coordinating with ditch companies to address fuel loads in ditches that go throughout the community, some of which the city of Louisville has more direct control over and others that will require continued coordination with the ditch owners. So based on our engagement with the city, I can confidently say that parks and open space takes the protection of your properties seriously while also trying to manage for other important values of open space. And I promise, they didn't pay me to say that. I pride myself in sincerity, and I really do mean that. I have observed resiliency and fortitude across the community, both from homeowners who we've interacted with and city employees. And I'm hopeful that through lessons learned from the tragic experience of the Marshall Fire, this wildfire risk assessment and other ongoing work by partners, the community can continue your journey towards fire adaptation. Thank you for entrusting us with this opportunity to support the city of Louisville. I'll stay up here for questions.
Any questions on the presentation from the council? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. So thank you. First up for public comment, we have Tanya Samaru.
Hi, Tanya Samaru, 944 Larks Berlin. I just wanted to say thank you to all the council members who came out to my house at my invitation to talk about fire hardening in my neighborhood, which is adjacent to the open space and completely burned in the Marshall Fire. I'm excited about this report, but it's the fifth one that says that we need to fire harden the homes adjacent to the open space, the very ones we're rebuilding in the Marshall Fire. I understand that mitigation in the open space is going to be controversial to some degree, a bit expensive, hard to work out, and has to be constantly done. And people have to be diligent about that. And I definitely want to see it done. But I also want to emphasize that, you know, as the report says, you also need to mitigate structures. I've spoken with a lot of you individually about the time, the time criticalness of doing that in my neighborhood. Most of us rebuilding our homes are now in permitting. And there, in my neighborhood alone, I estimate about 30% of the houses may be rebuilt by investors. Investors who are building much bigger, larger, more expensive houses than the ones that existed there before and in many cases are being built. I really hope this council will do something to immediately pass WUII code, maybe in an emergency ordinance if necessary, to make sure as many of those houses as possible are fire hardened. It is cost-effective. It costs between $5,000 and $10,000. And it takes the burden off, you can't just rely on this open space mitigation. So I hope the council takes that very seriously. And I'd say a lot of my neighbors support it with an opt-out for fire survivors who can't afford to rebuild, but we do have $5,000 grants. So everybody should be doing some of this in their house. I like that cancer analogy. Thanks so much. I forgot, I also had cancer. 11 years now, I survived my breast cancer that I got in my early 30s. And it's funny because I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, the fire was a fluke. It couldn't happen again." Ha, well, five years before the Lahaina Fire, there was a fire in the same area that burned some of the same houses that burned. And as a cancer patient, I've officially been declared cured from my cancer. But I tell you, I do not act like I'm not going to get cancer again. I absolutely mitigate my risks, and I'm very careful with my health. And I hope the city will take the same due care to make sure that we aren't harmed again by something that happens, blows out from the west, whatever fire comes along, and that we're all going to be a safe, resilient community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joshua Cooperman. Mr. Cooperman, you should probably sit closer, given the number of times you're going to be stuck.
Sorry. Josh Cooperman, I live in Louisville. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and the city for getting this report done. I think it's really good information for the city to have. Like I say, I'm very supportive of doing wildfire mitigation on our open spaces. And I'm glad that we have information so that we can implement it using a science-based approach with best practices. And I'd also like to say that I think it's quite important that we do it in an ecologically sound way, which I think is, in a part, included in our charter, but also because I think it's important to consider that our open spaces are places for wildlife as well. Echoing the previous speaker, I do think we should do more than mitigation on open spaces. I agree that we should adopt elements of the WUII codes that are appropriate for Louisville, especially for parts of Louisville that have high risks. And I also, you know, I think that we should also very much think about fire hardening existing structures. You know, at least at first through education and incentives, but perhaps eventually through some kind of requirements. Lastly, I'd just like to say one thing, which I feel like is kind of left out of the report. And that is that mitigating climate change is also mitigating wildfires. At the present moment, climate change is probably the biggest factor in heightening wildfire risks in many locales all over the world. So I think part of our mitigation efforts should be simply mitigating climate change so that wildfire risk is not increasing with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom. First up, we have Lisa Hughes.
Hi, sorry, I was having trouble unmeeting. Lisa Hughes, I live in, or will be living in Louisville again when my house is done. I have a comment, well, I agree with the previous two speakers, but I also have a comment for the presenters. I don't know if they'll be allowed to address this, but I read through, I, well, first of all, thank you for your work and everything you've done, and I think the report is amazing. I, I was reading through the full report, and I did not see the hillside open space, which is north of Via Appia, just across the street from the rec center and extends westward. On your list, not of high priority, but on your list at all. And I'm just concerned regarding that area and what recommendations would be for that area. Was an area directly surrounded by fire neighborhoods that were burned? So I don't know if you can answer that, but I did not see it on any, anywhere in the report. So I just was wondering if it got overlooked or it was included in some other open space. That was basically my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Larry Donner.
Yes, my name is Larry Donner. I lived at 1020 Willow Place. I will be living there again next month. I'd like to start out by saying, I think the report was very well done. I particularly appreciated the prairie restoration maps and where they suggested we do prairie restoration. And I would like to thank the city staff for the efforts they've done. I took a tour of Davidson Mesa where they are beginning to do some prairie restoration. It's well done, it's well thought out. And while we can never eliminate all risk of wildland fire, I think had the city taken this approach five years ago, the risk would have been reduced to the point where we would not have seen the major conflagration that we did. So I want to thank city staff for what they're doing, and I just want to support the report as it was written. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rick and Ruda.
Okay, this, hopefully you can hear me. This is just going to be quick. I like the report. I, I live, my name's Richard Ruticek. I live right across from Davidson Mesa there, not too far from Larry's home. I'd like the mitigation report. I hope that we continue to move forward, considering the destruction that happened in our area. I just wanted to make a comment, and I agree with Larry. If, this was taken, taken seriously a number of years ago. And as I always mention, I've been here for 30 years. And for decades, there was a concern about mitigation and fire, and it was always handled, except for the past five years, we were more concerned about allowing the grasses to grow. And I think by allowing that to grow, we probably put more toxins and pollutions in the soil and in the air than we would have known had we just cut the grass and moved forward the way it is. So I haven't read the full report. I look forward to actually looking at the report. I'm glad that this is something that's taken seriously, and I hope it's taken, I hope that the city council actually continues to take it seriously and doesn't neglect the funding, the mitigation that we need to do. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it to council. I'm going to take the opportunity, so Director Blackmore, there was a question about the hillside open space. Is there someone who can answer that question?
Yeah, I can do a quick first answer on that, which is that, you know, without having to pull up the maps directly in front of me, I can almost guarantee that we did look at hillside open, was that open space or park? On, off of Via Appia, by the rec center. What likely occurred is that in the updated wildfire modeling, there might have been limited wildfire risk modeled in the wildfire behavior model. And so it might not have shown up in the table included in Section 3 of the report with an associated risk value on it.
Thank you very much. So first up is Mayor Protem Fahy.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that, that the hillside neighborhood on the map is directly south of the enclave neighborhood, which was included in the evaluation. So I think they were just combined into one neighborhood and not listed out as two separate neighborhoods, because they are on the map. And I will add my thanks to everyone who was involved with this report. I think it was very thorough. It's a great first step. I think there are several steps that we need to take based on the information that we're getting from this report. I would like to see more mitigation done in the WUII. I walked along Davidson Mesa just on Sunday, and the grasses there up against the fences is about three feet tall. So that's something that we need to start working on more regularly, is getting those grasses that border the neighborhood's mode or somehow mitigated. I'm also building my house back in a fire-safe way, and I encourage everyone else to do the same.
Thank you. Others? Councilor Dickinson and then Councilor Heffner.
Yeah, I'm curious. I know that one of the benefits to prescribed burns is getting rid of non-native grasses and that. So we had a uncontrolled burn. But one of the things we noticed was we, we did do, if you will, a burn through a lot of our open space. Are we noticing benefits to that, to those grasses? Did, I mean, I would hope that if a controlled burn does it, that this burn did something there. Are we noticing anything better with, with the cheat grass and other things that were there?
Yeah, I can add a couple comments to that. We have had a consultant come through to do a vegetation survey following the fire, and they did see a mix of a flush in weeds as well as natives. So that's common after a fire sometimes. The heat from the fire will release non-native species. But we can say the litter, the ground litter and materials were consumed and reduced. So there is reduction in fuel loading in that way. And then we continue to work on monitoring and reducing weeds through all of our practices with integrated weed management.
And then, I know we're not getting today to, you know, exact practices next year and exactly how to implement all of this. But one of the things in the report is that Louisville does not do any prescribed burning, and it's one of the main things. Is that something that's going to come back as an option? Or is that one, like, I'm not sure if that's, one of the things to think about is just sort of the trauma effect, right? That having any sort of fire, even a barbecue, is triggering for some people. It's known to be a good tool. But is that something that's going to come back to us as a possibility in some way or some location, or is that kind of off?
I think that the beauty of this report is it gives a variety of options for, you know, primary or secondary, tertiary treatment options and the pros and cons of all of them. So I think that as we move into next year with this report in hand, I think that'll be a decision based on a number of factors. If there's something that's equally as viable and/or, you know, kind of what the general temperament of the council, budget, community all aligns with is that particular item.
Well, I guess that's, that's a bigger question I have, Mayor, is just how much of this is going to come back to us? So great report, absolutely fantastic. One of my favorite things is we're already doing a lot of the work. You know, how much direction is needed from council? As opposed to, we've already, as I think, set pretty clear direction that this is something we care about and want to do. So, I mean, we don't normally get into the nitty-gritty of exactly how to do the work. We have a great report with great ideas and a great staff to implement that and direction from council that we want it done. So how much, I mean, to my, my last question, how much is really coming back to us versus, great, keep doing, keep doing the great work?
So that's a good question, city manager. Would you like to address that?
Yeah, thank you. And I was trying to project over to Adam and Amber. Next steps, if you could talk about the next steps piece. I think that's what council members asking.
Yeah, so a couple things. This topic, and coming back before you, is on the proposed work plan for next year for city council to have some attention to this as we kind of evolve our practices. And so, you know, that can be included with discussions about how we go about that. But next steps for us, we are in a multi-year agreement for our grazing effort. We've already expanded our cattle grazing from one property to two property. We'll be taking the primary recommendations, particularly as Amber mentioned earlier, now that we have a prioritized list of risk that we can kind of pull from. And we'll be working through those as our top priority as we move into the future.
And maybe my last question is, is it, is it fair to say that a lot of these things have pretty big price tags or could have big price tags? The passing of 2C is pretty critical in funding most of the work that we would do here, correct?
That sales and use tax does fund the entirety of our open space operation, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilor Heffner?
Yeah, thanks. Councilor Dickinson asked almost all my questions, so I will mainly just express my thanks for a really thorough and well-done report. And also, how encouraged I am to hear that the city has already taken a lot of steps on some of the recommendations and that sort of the things we've done already have been validated by the report recommendations, I think is really, really commendable and really important. So thanks for all the hard work on this.
Others? Councilor Kern?
Thank you.
Thank you. My first opportunity to speak. This is exciting, and a topic that is especially near and dear to me. I think pretty much everybody here knows, I, like Deb, lost my home in the Marshall Fire. I am not in the enclave or Hillside. I'm in the neighborhood directly across McHaslin from that. So please consider those neighborhoods too when we're talking about really high risk. When I looked at the maps, I saw that there was a delineation. The street didn't stop the fire. So, granted, there were super high winds, but I think that even less winds will bring it. And we saw some abnormal movement in the fire, plus normal movement. And I appreciate that that's all kind of being brought forward. One of the things I wanted to thank you for too is the time that went into this. I spent, I think it was five or six hours reading the entire report, and looking forward to being able to share that with a lot of the other community leaders that are actively involved in this. I like seeing the changes that have already been made to open space. I really, really appreciate it. It's a lot of peace of mind for those of us rebuilding, and just people who in general who were, are staying in this community and want to know that it's going to be safer moving forward. I would like, though, to address the comment about the height of grasses in our open spaces. And I know we've discussed this enough, I'm speaking out of term, please correct me, Jeff. If we can do things like this calendar year before we get into the super-dry winter of an additional round of mowing in these areas that we see that are very high, and if there's budget issues with that, if you can bring that to us so that we can have a conversation and figure out what would be needed, that would be monumental, as the fact that the last fire happened in December. I don't want to say, oh, it's end of the growing season, nothing will happen. If it's high now and we're at the tail end of a growing season, I'd really love to see a way for us to mitigate that if any way possible. Other than that, just thanks for all the hard work. There's a lot of us in here tonight that if we can add the component of hardening, not just to public buildings but to private spaces, we will have a good, solid plan to rebuild and move forward. And I would like to say, and I'm sorry, Jeff, if I'm jumping ahead too, we absolutely need to make home hardening part of the 2024 work plan. And if it's possible to move it into this 2023 and part of a conversation sooner, I would love to see that. And I think there are a lot of residents who would like to see that too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Lee?
Yeah, I think the questions have largely been answered, so I'm just going to echo the appreciation for the work that was done on the report, because it was huge. And I think something that a lot of, a lot of people have been waiting for, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's execution, right? And that's kind of, you know, trying to figure out what the policy is, which, which of these will be useful for you, which you need guidance on. I mean, Wui code is something they're going to make councils approval on. And so those are things that we need to, I mean, look at ourselves, and I know we will. So I wanted to just call out one thing, and it's not really even in the report. Amber, you are not the Amber Alliance, right? I just want to make sure that's-
That is correct.
Okay.
That's a separate entity, unrelated.
All right, all right.
But it is a great name.
But I, yeah, it is, it is a great name. I'll say that. One of the things that I had the privilege of doing is to go out with the open space board and to look at some spaces in town. And I'd encourage others to do that on council if you haven't. I hadn't done that before, and it was really interesting to see the way in which, you know, Amber, you reviewed the spaces, things that you were noticing and pointed out to us. I think it was also interesting to see the other members of the open space board who are incredibly knowledgeable, and there's a lot of, you know, rich experience there to draw on. And it was very enlightening, because sometimes when we're looking out at that, I know this is true for other people in the community, when you look out at a field in open space, it's not easy to tell unless you're familiar what's native, what's not, what's invasive, what's not. I mean, we know certain things that are invasive, and we can all agree, we all know Russian olives and all of that. But some of these others are different, and it's very important, I think it was very important to me, just to see how, how much management needs to happen out there. And, you know, it was, it was also exciting to see how excited you were about your job, because you are excited about your job, and I appreciated that too. So, it's just a plug for Amber's crew. If you get a chance to go out with them, it's worth it.
So I just have a few. Do you have another comment? Go ahead, and then I'll do a wrap-up comment.
Okay, I just wanted to say again that this was a wonderful report, and that it is the first step. I would like to see the next step being a priority of what, what we're going to do, in what order, and the locations, in order to, I guess, implement the plan in the most effective and cost-effective way. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank staff, and certainly I know this was across many departments within the city. So, you know, first off, just finding the whole analysis and the report, and what we were looking for as a product, you know, we got printed copies, which I was amazed by some of the big sheets we were looking at and so forth. But, you know, the recommendation about next steps, it's part of the, you know, our work plan. So from a policy perspective, this is going forward. As Councilor Dickinson mentioned, you know, we do have a ballot issue for open space out there that will help fund a lot of these things, especially the renovation of a lot of these, getting rid of some of the non-native species and so forth is very, very expensive. But anyway, I think this is, thank you for the informational item tonight, and council looks forward to meeting with you again and next year. I know you've laid out the steps, you know, very effectively, so thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on to regular business, item B, resolution number 63, series 2023, a resolution approving a conservation easement for the front facade and first 10 feet of the primary structure in a property located at 601 Lincoln Avenue in exchange for a $30,000 grant. So with that, I will open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation who appears to be ready to go.
That timing worked out better than I thought it would. Okay, yes, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. This is a presentation on 601 Lincoln Avenue, resolution number 63, series 2023. This is a conservation easement and a $30,000 grant. Public notice was met as required. So I'm going to start by giving sort of an overview, because this is not a typical reservation case, and then I'll get into the details as I go. So just to summarize the request overall, it's for a conservation easement that would cover the front facade and the first 10 feet of the, so sorry, hold on.
Lush?
It's for a conservation easement that would apply to the front facade and the first 10 feet of the primary structure. So you can see up there on your top right, that dark red color is sort of the aerial view of what would be affected by the easement. The easement itself includes an exhibit B, which shows the parameters of the easement. I'll go through that in a little bit, but down at the right, bottom right, you can see like the first page, the first page. So it actually is a picture in the easement. And overall, this limits the ability of the applicant to change anything on the part of the structure that is within the conservation easements. Accompanying this is a $30,000 grant, which would be in exchange for the easement, and that number is based on funds required to restore the front portion of the structure. Okay, so conservation easements, which are not super common in Louisville, but we do have them, are under the authority of section 32605, C and D of the Louisville Municipal Code, both talks about and gives the ability for the city to purchase easements, place easements, and then also to use funds to purchase easements or grant funds, you know, for preservation. There is also a grant program for downtown properties specifically that place easements in exchange for preservation and restoration-style grants. So just to kind of fill out the picture, as it were, of all what the easements are like in Louisville. Just to note, 601 Lincoln Avenue, of course, is a residential property, and it's not downtown. But we do have, you know, a similar grant program to what's being proposed tonight for this easement specifically. And I would say in general that easements can allow both more flexibility and also more specificity than a landmark. So they can allow more specificity in the sense that you can place them on a specific structure or a specific part of a structure in a way that our landmark program doesn't allow, because landmarks cover the entire property. But they also allow more flexibility, because they don't have to meet the same criteria as landmarks. So on this project in particular, the Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval in December of 2020. The proposed addition that's basically on the back, immediately starting in the back of the easement, it's not compatible with landmarking, but, you know, the easement itself would be protected. And so the Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval of both the easement and the grant in exchange. Now, between 2020 and 2023, the applicant did complete restoration work and the addition as well. And I'll talk a little bit more of that, about that in a minute. So the proposal for the easement itself would, as I said, it denotes the front 10 feet of the structure and also the front facade. So the way it's outlined in the exhibit B itself is over there on the left in that purple solid line box, so you can see kind of what that actually literally looks like. And then there's also an exhibit that details, you know, specifically what would need to be preserved in the elements. So basically, if any changes, if this were approved, any changes that the applicant wanted to make, they would have to go through a review process, and they would have to match this. So effectively, they're not able to change things beyond what's being preserved in the easement. But of course, you know, if somebody like ran a lawnmower into the front part of the house or something like that, and they needed to do some type of building permit work, they would actually need to come back to what's shown here in this easement. So, you know, this isn't a landmark, but we can use similar criteria, the same criteria to evaluate it, right? So architectural significance of this property, first of all, the structure itself is identified as one to preserve, as a priority property to preserve, in one of our Paleo West consultant surveys, where they went through and looked at, honestly, at this point, it's been hundreds of properties downtown, and they do have some lists of what properties should be landmarked or preserved in some way. So this is on that list. The easement itself, so I'm not going to talk about the structure overall, right, because that's not applicable. We're talking about the easement. The easement contains specific elements, including folk Victorian ornamentation, and then a front porch, and then also in addition, the restoration work that's been completed actually helps to increase the architectural integrity. Social significance as well, so this is an early 20th century home, and the ownership of the property at that period is, has connections to the Mercantile Building, and then sort of a longer history of connections to downtown commercial history in general. So it definitely does have architectural and social significance in that way. And then just to note, you know, the easement protects the front facade and maintains a number of those architectural elements that tell a little bit of that early 20th century So in terms of the grant, the proposal is $30,000. Where that money, that amount overall comes from is foundation and crawl space work, roof repairs, exterior finishes, window and door replacement. And so we took the total of that, which is $60,000, divided it by two, as though it were a matching grant. That's where the $30,000 comes from. So in terms of analysis, and I'm using this word grant, and of course, it's not technically a grant, it's technically a purchase of an easement, because we don't have a grant program for this. But I think it captures, you know, well, the intention of having the work be related, as would our other grants be, right, to preservation and restoration. So it's based on estimates from 2020, the work was completed. As I mentioned before, it improves the architectural integrity overall. And then also just to note, you know, HPC voted to recommend approval of the cost of the easement, right? So they took all of these different factors into, into consideration, recommended approval at that time. I will note, there are some changes to the addition, so not the easement itself, but to what was built behind it between the HPC approval and now, that are reflected in an updated exhibit B. Staff didn't find that they really affected the easement itself, and so didn't, you know, not recommending any sort of condition or change. But just to note that there are some, some elements of the exhibit that are slightly different from what HPC reviewed back in 2020. So I'll just end here by summarizing that staff has prepared resolution 63, series 2023, which would approve the conservation easement, which would approve the conservation easement on the portion of the primary structure notated in the exhibit B, and it would also approve the purchase amount of $30,000. And I'll just end by saying, as I noted in the staff report, that staff's not making a recommendation now, but just rather bringing forward the HPC's recommendation to council. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions on the presentation? Councilor Hefner?
Yeah, I just want to check my understanding on something, which is this conservation easement treatment would be available to another similarly situated homeowner, you know, imagine the same circumstances somewhere else in town. This isn't a one-off. This is something we could do again.
So, it is, it is a unique case, in that there's not a grant program that currently exists for this. So anybody that came in the future would have to go through its own sort of bespoke process, the same as this one. So, any, so that's the answer to that question. Somebody could ask for a conservation easement on a commercial property, on a residential property, and that would go through staff review, HPC review, and would sort of be looked at at the time. But there's no specific grant program being proposed.
Directors, Carl?
Yeah, thank you, if I could add to that. Just a little more context for those of you who aren't as familiar with our historic preservation program, because you don't see this all the time. You only see the landmarks. But within our Old Town Overlay zoning, we have two categories of zoning incentives. And one of them is a facade incentive, to preserve facades just like this. So typically, the incentive that we've had in our code for many years is that if you preserve the front facade in this manner, you are eligible for density bonus, a floor area ratio, a lock coverage bonus, which this applicant took advantage of also. So they receive the zoning bonuses. Back in 2020, when we were working with this applicant, there was a question about our code, and the question is, is if you, if you have one of these facade preservation incentives, there's nothing in the code that says that gets preserved in perpetuity. So we're giving the, so theoretically somebody could come back and alter the front facade. So the idea was, maybe we want to have a program where we also incentivize putting easements on the facade. I think HPC, back in 2020, when they looked at it, they thought this could be a good case, but they weren't interested in looking at it as a formal grant program. So I just wanted to give that background of, you know, how we'd have the zoning incentive. As you know, we do have the Old Town Overlay zoning code amendment project that got delayed because of the fire. So that could come back and address the, I think my recommendation is rather than making this a formal program, that we would look at revising our incentive program more comprehensively with the Old Town Overlay zoning rewrite.
Which would be a future item.
That would be a future item.
We're not, yeah, so codifying it makes sense, but that's not something we're addressing tonight.
Yeah, so let me, let me just, so there, I mean, there must be some, we must have some legal authority to do this, right? Like, there must be some basis that, that allows us to do this. And I just want to, I want to make sure we're not saying this is, we're making this available for, for these, these individuals in particular, and wouldn't, even if we don't create a program, we wouldn't sort of imagine, imagine the exact same house next door, right, exact same circumstances. Are we saying we wouldn't, could we just consider making the same type of conservation easement purchase available?
I mean, I think city council could consider approving other conservation easements that were similar to this. I think this is a bigger policy discussion about, is this the right tool for preservation of small portions of front facades? I think there might be better ways to address that with the Old Town Overlay through incentives that we're exploring. But we have the legal authority with which Amelia outlined within the city ordinance. So we, you absolutely have the authority to purchase conservation easements on commercial and residential historic properties.
So I think this is a good discussion, but it is a discussion beyond the scope of the resolution. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, well, let me just explain what my thinking is, which is, if there's a policy discussion to be had here, which it sounds like there is, I at least have some small amount of discomfort in just passing through this resolution as a, as a one-off before we've had the policy discussion. That may make sense under the circumstances. I'm not sure. That may make sense under the circumstances, I'm not sure. But given that there's no framework in place, and we wouldn't necessarily make it available to anyone else who came knocking, that's sort of my thinking, is, does this make sense as a one-off, this situation only, and if somebody else comes along, we're going to say, we don't really have a policy for that? So anyway, I'll stop there, but that's, that's what my thinking is.
Thank you. Counselor Lay?
Yeah, it's sort of piling on to the concern that Councilman Hefner made, but trying to sort of move that discussion a little bit forward. I understand what's in front of us tonight, that we have to make a decision, and I get that. We've put off the, the Old Town Overlay over and over and over again, and I am concerned that just because, you know, we're, we're talking about changing things as part of that, I'm worried that we will get into this. So maybe the, the, well, I don't know whether there's any language, I guess I would look to the city attorneys to whether there's any language that can give us a hedge against the sort of, I don't know whether it's a waiver, or whether it's, the, the city's going to have a hard time, if there is something between now and that discussion, maybe the answer is just to have that discussion soon. But is there any language in this, in this resolution that is worth inserting to provide us a little bit more of a hedge?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Amelia, but I think the answer to the question was that if somebody else, some other property owner came forward and was interested in also granting the city a conservation easement in the manner that is being proposed in this case, that it would be considered. It's just, we don't have a formal process in place, and you don't necessarily need a formal process to purchase this kind of conservation easement, although from a policy standpoint, it sounds like there's some interest in establishing an official program to do that. But, you know, any other property owner could approach the city, and it would be considered and evaluated and sent to HPC and brought before you in the same manner that this one was, is what I heard.
Now, that's, that's what I heard too. I'm looking to you to make sure you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, so I don't think that there's anything to, to draft into this resolution to contemplate some future application that may or may not come before you.
Right.
Good, thanks.
Counselor Dickinson, and then we're going to, the applicant actually has comments, is that correct?
Yes, the applicant is here, and has a presentation.
All right, so we'll let Counselor Dickinson make questions, comments, and then we'll go to the applicant.
Yeah, so I just want to, the part for me that's odd, that I don't think we, I think it was in the presentation, but maybe not, or was in the literature, but not in the presentation, is a little bit of an awkward, like, kind of order of things, right? Like, because it came in 20, in 2020, what we should have done is say, yes, if you preserve, then we will give you $30,000, and maybe it's, you know, like, the normal grant program is, show us that you spent 60, like, they literally have to turn their receipts in to the city at some point, show us you spent 60, and you'll get 30 back. Show us you spent 70, you get 30 back. But show us you spent 50, you only get 25 back. But we're not actually doing a grant program, we're purchasing a conservation easement. And so part of me feels like it's backwards, because like, well, they already preserved it, why would we give them, if it's an incentive program, why would we give them any money for something they already did? But I'm also understanding, based on what, Rob, you said, they could tear down the facade at this point. And so what we're saying is, there's a little bit of both. It's like, thanks for preserving it, and also please preserve it into perpetuity, and the amount we've picked could have been any amount. We could give them, I mean, sure, there's some limit, but we could say, gosh, that front porch is worth 50,000, or that front porch is only worth 10,000, and we've designed it to be kind of similar to our grant program, half of the cost of preserving it. Am I getting all that pretty right?
Yep.
Okay. So I think I'm comfortable with it, I mean, I think in the end, I can, I can support this in that it is important to me and to our community, and I think to this council, that we preserve these facades, and as you walk down the street, it's another big part of it, as you walk down the street, while there is an addition on the back, there is a very familiar feel as you go down and, and you see this old building on the front. So I, I think this is something I can support. I think to your point, Dietrich, you know, I will be more comfortable when we somehow codify this concept a little bit more solidly, but I'm, I'm actually, I'm okay with the idea of making, I wouldn't call this an exception, but doing something a little bit outside the norm, and then saying, well, let's, let's make that the norm then, let's make this an easier process. If this is something we like, and we did for a good reason, let's make this a pretty easy thing to do in the future, as opposed to having everybody come in and do this weird thing over and over again. We want to say, we like this, this is good, let's do it again. And I think if we vote this down tonight, then we're saying, we don't like this, so definitely don't codify it, as opposed to saying, oh, we're going to vote it down until we codify it, then you can bring it back and we'll vote yes. So I think if, the intention is to make this, is that we like this, I think we, I'm comfortable saying yes to this one, and let's move forward and make this easier in the future, so that the next applicant. And again, the last thing I'd say is that someone can come forward and do this again. It's not that they can't. In our current system, they can, this could come before us, again, without changing any policy, without rewriting anything, this could come before us again, so they can get equal treatment. It's just maybe not the right way to do it, is, I would, maybe I think agree with you, that not the right way to do it.
So do we want to have the applicant make some comments?
Which one, my first? Lecturer? Yeah, okay. Okay, good evening, council. My name's Andy Johnson. I am a Lewisville resident, as well as Lewisville business owner, here in Old Town. I am joined by homeowner Roger Green, who's sitting behind me, who will have a few words at the end of my presentation, and we're, we're both really glad to be here and talk about this. Being a frequent flyer of the Historic Preservation Program, having many applicants over a couple decades now, specifically more when the program was enacted, I think that whenever we have something new to talk about, in terms of a, a process, we can go down a lot of rabbit holes, we can get mired in, in details and lose sight of the bigger picture. We have an amazing Historic Preservation Program that is unprecedented in, in the United States. And I think the big picture is that we are, it's volunteer-based, it is entirely around providing incentives and rewarding those who want to save our structures in their entirety, in their parts, however that is, and I think the flexibility and the way we go about it is unique. I, I can't emphasize that enough. And if you're not familiar with the program, I know, I know there are a few members who have actually gone through the program firsthand, it, it really is special. So we evaluate these on a case-by-case basis every single time, and that's really important to consider. This is not, everybody gets to have access to this, there is a real rigorous evaluation for how these projects are evaluated. So, not to try to turn an, an application into a policy discussion, as we've already kind of ventured into, let's talk about this home. I love talking about architecture with you, I feel like anytime we ask for money, you deserve to have the full story, so here we go. All right, so this home is on Lincoln. It is about mid-block between Pine and Hutchinson, near Lewisville Elementary. If you are familiar with Old Town and have ventured up and down Lincoln, this is one of those homes that has probably always stood out, because it is one of the only ones left with the amount of Victorian detail that is intact, and actually, it was maintained incredibly well over the years. These are some images of the home prior to the sale to the Greens. This is probably the state that you remember it in for the longest period of time, and all the detailing that did happen on this incredibly small home, yet rich with architectural detailing and history. We, we have very few other homes that have this kind of character in Old Town, and it was truly an honor to be asked to work on this home and, and be able to find a good solution for its long-term life. We, as many of you know, our, our oldest records are oftentimes our county assessor records, which happened around mid-century, 1948 tends to be that year. This is a photo of that, of that home with a plan diagram of how the home had been added on to over the years. You can see eraser marks, you can see different pen marks on the plan, showing how this home kind of added on, very much in a Lewisville way, very iterative. This home dates back to what we believe is 1905. The, the existing site plan looked like this, with very significant architectural features on the front porch and the front of the home. As you went back in a, kind of towards the rear of the home, it had had a very serious case of remodelitis. It had lots of additions and lots of kind of covering up of what the original structure used to be. We do believe that the detached building was an original garage turned into a studio. All sorts of fun things happened on this site. The original floor plan looked like this. It is full of lots of small individual rooms, not really matching what we do with contemporary living now, with more open floor plans, a little bit more connectivity between living, kitchen, dining, even, even bedroom spaces. So it was functional for the, the previous owners, who were just a couple enjoying this home over a few decades, but it had started to kind of outlive its lifetime in, in its finishes and kind of the character of the spaces, and, and really the quality of the spaces. I'm drawing a line here, showing where that 10-foot line is, that we use as a preservation line, not a landmark line, but a preservation line, that's kind of a code distinction that Directors Akaro touched on. And then some of the existing elevations of this building, as we did the historic structure assessment, we always document the home in its entirety with elevations and plans, again, showing the line of that preservation, that, that first 10 feet of the, of the structure. When we do a historic structure assessment, we, we codify the plan, so when you see lots of colors on a historic floor plan, that means there are lots of additions. The, the two original and most important parts of the home is the large red area indicating the original home, and the yellow front porch, both of those, we presume, were built at the same time. There is a pink section in the back that we do believe was a rear porch, but it was entirely surrounded with additions over, over the decades. As we evaluated the structure, knowing that this was something we wanted to bring before HPC and council as a, presumably at that time, a landmark project with hopefully a grant, grant request as long, as well as an alteration certificate, we knew that there were parts of this building that had to go away, so we indicated those in red in a diagram that we presented to HPC, basically eliminating the, the remodelitis portion that I had mentioned previously. Again, looking at that 10-foot preservation line, that's, that's going to be a theme that we'll talk about throughout this presentation. And then we started schematic design, and we started to look at, okay, how do we work with this home so that we can save it in its entirety, basically everything that wasn't being proposed to be demoed? And we ended up with something that ventured into weird and bizarre and also complicated, and it really did not work with the existing structure, it did not create a floor plan that was usable by the Greens, or really presented itself to the street in any pleasant way. So we went back to the drawing board. This leads into what we presented to the Historic Preservation Commission, and we, we took a big step back and we said, all right, here's our existing house, what do we do with the program that's being presented to us to make this livable for a family of four, and bring it into this, this next century? And so we did a diagram of the addition and how we could work with the existing house, quickly realizing that the front of the building was our priority, everything behind it was going to be very difficult to save in a meaningful way. So we, we shifted our attention to focusing on that back portion, looking at that magic preservation line, look, adding most of the program behind that line, and trying to preserve and keep that precious part of the building as intact and forward-facing and dominant as possible, even though we were proposing a fairly significant addition to the back. Again, looking at the north elevation preservation line, and then looking at 3D images that we put into the photo of the neighborhood, Geo located it, made it very accurate, and you can see that the home still presented itself very well in its kind of originality. However, it had, you know, parts of that new addition that were kind of bigger, and, and sort of mimicking what was going on beyond. We liked the design, however, in our discussions with, with staff, we, we discovered that this was not a landmark candidate at this point, we were into a preservation candidate, and we ventured into that kind of nebulous zone within the Historic Preservation Code of preservation. And, and it is very undefined, and really, we kind of looked at this as, hey, this is an opportunity to define preservation. And to go through the effort of saving a structure like this, a 1905 home, 1905 home, all of the money expended, all of the effort to shore up and preserve this home seemed like it needed or deserved some kind of recognition. It may not look like the landmark program, but it could be similar. And so that was the basis for our discussion around the conservation easement, as well as the monetary reward for doing that effort. So this is our timeline, started in October of 2020 with an application, we went through discussions, we ended up with a Historic Preservation Commission meeting at the end of December, had an approval for recommendation of the conservation easement, and also had the historic demo request approved as well, which was demoing that portion that we looked at earlier. From that point, the Greens and I decided that we were, we had, we had kind of a bigger project now to focus on. We needed to get this thing to building permits, and we, we hit pause on the conservation easement process. There were some other things that needed to happen in terms of providing documentation, checking to make sure that, that this was going to be doable with lender, and, and topics like that came up. So we decided to say, okay, let's just focus on getting this to the finish line. And we started to kind of do minor revisions. We looked at the front facade, we said, hey, we don't want a big gable looming over this front facade, so we tried to look at limiting that gable front, and look more at kind of a broad face that sloped up with a roof that ran in the north-south direction. And so my point in illustrating all this is that we, we kept making steps to position the historic part of the home in a better light. We went through color studies, we tried a dark scheme to see if that was going to fit with the home, and went through a number of studies. We basically kind of designed this thing maybe three to four times, almost in its entirety. And it was, it was a fun exploration and process to, to really discover what this house wanted to have happen. So we did a lot of work. And so from there, we said, all right, we're getting close to construction documents, we submitted for a building permit, and we're into construction, and we start looking at what our final building looks like. And so these are screenshots from our construction documents. The building starts to take on a little bit more of a background role to that, that historic home. It is still that larger two-story addition, but the goal with- It is still that larger two-story addition, but the goal with how it presents itself and right behind that historic part of the home is much more laid back. It's much less imposing and trying to mimic shapes of that front building and becoming much more subservient to what we would like to have as more of a dominant form with the historic preservation part of the project. So going around the project, looking at the model, and then finally, these are photos from today, just to, for, just out of respect, I put a white out over signs, but you can see our public notice sign. Looking at the building through the two or three major ash trees that are up front and then one a little bit closer up. It's got its spooky decorations going on. And then one through the trees looking from the northeast side. So timeline ends with January. Earlier this year, Roger re-engaged with both myself and planning staff to begin those discussions again after they had recovered from the construction process and took a deep breath, finally said, let's re-engage, let's finish this process, let's reward the project for what it deserves and memorialize all the effort that went into saving that front facade and still have the community enjoy it, have them enjoy it, and keep a really important building within our urban fabric. So with that, I would like to thank you. I will remain here for questions, but before we do that, I do want to invite Roger up, if you would like, and he can share a few words and then we can go into questions.
Thanks, Andy. I'll be super brief. So I've lived in Colorado over 30 years. My wife, same thing, more than 20 of that has been in Boulder County. We moved to Lewisville actually because this house came on the market and we immediately fell in love. And my wife showed it to me. I said, let's buy it. And she said, what? Because I'm the tight one in the family and I don't like to spend money on anything. And I saw this house and loved Lewisville and loved that house and the town and everything. So we did it. We actually had some friends that drove by and they're like, don't do this. This is a big project. So I appreciate Andy's perspective, you know, hindsight. We all look at things a little more favorably. That was fun. It was hard. It was actually a lot of work. It was super challenging to crack the code. I actually got a little bit emotional though, because when I saw what it ended up, like, we're super happy with it and we hope everyone else is too. My office is in that front window and I regularly see people actually stop and look and kind of smile, which is definitely very rewarding. In any case, we were really pleasantly surprised by how smooth the process was and how generous people were with their time and their feedback throughout the HPC process and planning. And as Andy mentioned, things got super complicated and we had to really focus on that and our kids. We have two daughters, nine and 11 now, and work. So we sort of focused on the project and when things were done and we kind of reemerged, it was time to re-engage. And so that's really why we're here. The historic preservation has always actually been a priority for us, that maintaining that front section, important for the history of the town, important for the character of the neighborhood. I mean, we lived in the house for a few weeks when we moved into town before we moved on to the other side of Lewisville while it was getting done. And people would walk by saying, this is one of our favorite houses in town, or this house, we love this house. And so it was super important to us. And that's why we kept iterating to make sure it just felt right. So in any case, it's great that this program exists. I hope you keep doing it for lots of houses regardless of how it works out for ours. We're really grateful, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mayor Protem?
I have two questions, actually. One question is, why was it not qualified for preservation? So why did you have to go with conservation rather than preservation?
Can I answer that?
Oh.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So landmark and preservation are two entirely different paths. Landmark has a very formal set of criteria set up by the Department of Interior, which I know you're very well aware of. Preservation is a pathway with guidelines that are established by our municipal code, not necessarily by the Department of Interiors. And we have parameters that this project fell into better for a preservation project than a landmark project, primarily because so much of the original home was being removed.
Okay, okay. And then the second question is on the financing. The money, the $30,000, would still come from the Preservation Commission fund?
As I understand.
Is that, okay. And do we have a significant balance in that account?
I believe we do.
I know, who would?
I believe staff can answer that probably.
Yeah, so this is an estimate, but it's about $2.5 million in the fund.
But I want to mention some of that's, I think it's really important to know that a lot of that's encumbered, that covers, okay, so $2.5 million after the encumbered funds.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to go to public comment at this point in time. Thank you for the presentation. Any members of the public in the chambers like to make comment on this resolution? No? Anybody on Zoom? All right, council?
I can make a motion.
Thank you. Great presentation, first of all. Thank you, Andy, as always. I find the documents regarding the history of homes in Lewisville always fascinating, but the way you tell the story, I could listen to you read a dictionary. You make it so engaging and exciting. To me, this is a no-brainer. We have a family that has put a lot of work into preserving a really important structure in our community. And I think we need to be flexible and adaptable so that we can continue to encourage families to modernize the homes in a way that still maintain the charm of Lewisville that draws a lot of us here. And I love that we found a solution that works for this family and still maintained the character of that front. And it works perfectly with the Halloween decorations and the paint colors and everything. You should walk by the house if you haven't. So for me, this is a great solution and I would like to see further investigation of could we reimagine this program to make it more attractive to more families, to use it in different ways than how it's been set up historically to be used. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dickinson?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 63, Series 2023, a resolution approving a conservation easement for the front facade and first 10 feet of the primary structure on the property located at 601 Lincoln Avenue in exchange for a $30,000 grant.
Second.
And I'll just speak in favor of the motion that, I agree with everything Councilmember Hamilton said. It's fantastic having preserved a home myself in Lewisville. It's a lot of work and a lot of money and it's a lot cheaper to tear it down and start over. So I know this $30,000 doesn't, you know, move the needle, but happy to, we have a historic preservation grant for this exact reason and so happy that you've made the choice that you've made and that we can walk by this front porch over and over again.
Counselor Kern?
Thank you. I just wanted to actually applaud both of you. When I saw the final version of what you did, it is remarkable that that super new addition is on there, yet from the street, it does look incredibly charming. It has that Victorian feel and I just, I wanted to publicly commend you for that because that is not an easy task and we see a lot of other changes happen. And I think this is an example of one that was done correctly. I did have one question. Since it's not a landmark, it's a conservation easement, something that I always love is when there's like some kind of an identifying plaque or something that mentions something about the history. Yes? That is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment. First, I want to acknowledge weird and bizarre, are those architectural terms? Okay, good to know. You teach us things. Roger, thank you and your family for investing in Lewisville. You know, this program was created for this reason. And I know this is not codified yet and I think you, I think staff has heard that we want to codify this. We don't want to do this as a one-off or feel like it's a one-off, but you know, this is the reason for this program. So thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Next up is regular item number C, Resolution Number 64, Series 2023, a resolution approving amendment to the D-Lo Plaza planned unit development to allow an outdoor eating and serving area on Lot 1, D-Lo Plaza subdivision. And just let council know, this is a follow-up item. We have addressed this before, so this is really codifying or changing, doing a resolution. So with that, does anybody have any disclosures on this item? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Maloney, members of the city council, Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'll be making the presentation. Yes, we have a temporary use permit for the outdoor beer garden that was approved about a year ago, which got them started out there. This PUD that's before you actually has some additional site improvements beyond what's already been made out there. But this would be the formal permanent PUD approval for the site. So I think as most of you know, this is out just west of Highway 42, near our downtown East Lewisville location. This is South Street, Miners Field down here, the South Street underpass off the map here leading into downtown, D-Lo Plaza. So Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden is on the north end unit and they've developed this parcel, which was slated for a drive-through restaurant or a bank or something like that. And it hasn't developed. And so they actually wanted to use it as a beer garden and they've developed it with that temporary use permit. So this is the actual permanent site plan. So there, again, what they've done out there is similar to this, but this actually has additional site amenities. It's configured slightly differently. It's about a 10,000 square foot area. It would be fenced. What's shown on the PUD are some shade structures and some additional amenities. It is crushed granite and artificial turf out there would be the surface, so it's a very natural type surface out there. Part of the proposal is to defer 11 parking spaces in this location here that were part of that original drive-through restaurant approval. So here's again Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden, here's the beer garden. They do have to have their patrons cross the parking lot, which is a little bit unusual and it has some liquor license issues. But they are allowed to do basically carryout liquor license under the current liquor licensing laws and then utilize the property. So we did review this against the mixed-use design standards for the city. It does meet all of the standards except one, which they are requesting a waiver, which is to allow that crushed granite and artificial turf instead of a more permanent, like a stone paver is what the mixed-use standards would call for for outdoor plazas. So they're asking for a waiver for that more natural surface area. The planning commission did review this. There were several conditions that were related, just to cleanup items, but they did have seven and eight, which were more substantive conditions, which were to include an enhanced crosswalk striping and then address line of sight issues. So what the applicant has done is actually, with the final proposal, is to have some enhanced striping. So it would be not just, it would be a crosswalk with an outline striping and then some pedestrian crossing signage at a couple of locations here and here, if you can see the arrow. And then they actually cut this corner back. So one of the issues was as, if you look at the larger parking lot, there will be vehicles traveling in and out of these drive aisles here. So for clear line of sight, they cut this back to meet our clear line of sight requirements at a typical intersection. We just applied that to the parking lot. So they've complied with all planning commission conditions. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you much for the presentation. Any questions? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. Were there any discussions about actually blocking off the entrance from Short Street and what that would do to traffic flow and pedestrian safety at that crosswalk?
We didn't really talk about that. I think, we didn't explore that very far. For one, this is a pretty important vehicular access point for the coffee shop drive-through. If you can see this location here, oh, that's not up there anymore, is it?
I guess before the drive-through, like you could still get in from Short, I misspoke when I said block off at Short Street, but, so you can still get into the drive-through but not go through where that pedestrian.
Block it off right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. We didn't explore that. I think that, we haven't fully explored it, but I think there could be issues with emergency access as well as access for the rest of the businesses would probably want to maintain that vehicular access. So Short Street is actually where the signal, so we just put in a signal a couple of years ago, really important for all of those businesses to have signalized access from that location.
Okay, thank you.
Director, did the applicant have a presentation? Want to make comments?
I don't think a presentation, but they're available for questions or did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, sure. Here, might as well. City council, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys as well as with Rob on this project. We moved into Lewisville about five years ago and this opportunity came up and on a fly, we chose it. And we mainly did this to become more part of the community and help focus the community into an area that we thought we could contribute to. The beer garden is critical to that. We've seen a lot of people come together that we appreciate and we've seen a lot of you. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to consider this as a permanent use.
Thank you. For the record, could you just state your name for us?
Sure, sorry. I am Garrett Nicodemus. I'm a part owner and the general manager of Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden.
Thank you. Any questions for the director or the applicants? All right, thank you. We'll go on to public comment. Anyone in the chambers like to make a comment? Oh, Joshua Cooperman. We also got you on D and G.
Hi, Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. Let's make a quick comment. Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden was very thoughtful in arranging a meet and greet for mayoral candidates over the weekend. So I think all three of us were there at different times and had a very nice experience out in the beer garden. So I'd just like to say it seems like a great amenity for that location, much better than having a parking spot, parking lot. So I very much support making it a permanent feature and I also really support deferring those 11 parking spots. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other, anybody on Zoom have public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it to council. Counselor Dickinson and then Counselor Hefner.
As you can say, I know this was kind of a weird process, the whole thing, and I know frustrating at times for everybody. I'm just really happy this came back this way and we now have this PUD to formally, you know, put into the system, I don't know the way to put it, but you know, you took a huge risk in doing what you did and I'm just glad that we're getting to this point where all that's kind of behind us and you have this great space and you can continue to make it a little bit better and offer an awesome, an awesome space right along 42. It's really cool. And as Josh said, much better than a parking lot, much better, in my opinion, than a fast food drive-through. It's really fantastic and feels really local and has a lot of personality. So I'm just happy that we got to this stage of the process. I know it wasn't easy and I know there's a lot of risk involved, a lot of money involved to get to this point in the process. And I appreciate you working with staff and getting all the way through it and hopefully be happy tonight and go have a beer.
Counselor Hefner?
Yeah, thanks. I would go ahead and move the approval of Resolution Number 64, Series 2023, a resolution approving an amendment to the D-Lo Plaza planned unit development to allow an outdoor eating and serving area on Lot 1, D-Lo Plaza subdivision.
Second. Council discussion?
I just make one comment in support of the motion, which is, boy, I think this is a great model of what you can do with unnecessary parking spaces.
this is a great model of what you can do with unnecessary parking spaces. And I'd love to see us do more similar things in the future with some of our many, many parking spaces.
Counselor Kern?
Thank you. I just actually want to say thank you. This is exactly what residents of this city love seeing. A business owner wanting to reinvest in our community, and making it a really fun place for everyone to enjoy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Call for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Portemfehie?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. This time, we're going to take a break until 8:00. All right. City Council is back in session. We're going to go to regular business D, ordinance number 1864, Series 2023, an ordinance approving a rezoning of Lot 10, Block 1, and Outline 1 of D-Lo Lofts Final Subdivision Plat from Commercial Community, CC, to Mixed Use Residential, MU-R, and approving an amendment to Exhibit A, Land Use Planned Exhibit, referencing Louisville Nissel Code, Chapter 17, 14, Mixed Use Zone Districts. This is the second reading and the public hearing. So with that, I will open the public hearing and ask staff for a presentation.
All right. Good evening again, mayor, members of City Council, Rob Zucaro, Community Development Director for the city. This is basically a rezoning. You saw in the title there that it's a, it's a, it's a map amendment to the zoning map, but there's also a land use exhibit that's getting amended as well, if this is approved. But this is what's now called, it's, it's a part of what's called D-Lo West. So some of you may have some history with a former development proposal called D-Lo Lofts. There was a PUD approved over here on the west side of the property that was never built. The current developer is looking at developing that old D-Lo Lofts property, as well as this property as well, and seeking a rezoning before they get into the development plans. So this is basically, again, on the east side of downtown. We've got the railroad tracks here. We've got Griffith to the north, Highway 42 to the east. And you can see the, the D-Lo development a little bit to the south here, leading down to South Street. So again, this is a rezoning. So we have our mixed-use district, which really just covers the D-Lo area, which is a unique zone district. And I'm going to get into a little bit of the history, because I think it's important in the context of the rezoning request. The CC zone district, there's two zone districts in our mixed-use district, which was all centered around redevelopment around the potential train station that would come into D-Lo. And so they're requesting, again, to go from that commercial to that residential. And basically, these two zone districts are created to have the MU residential, which is, it's supposed to be in the core of the mixed-use district, and that's supposed to be ultimately residential with, multifamily residential with commercial on the ground floor, was the original vision. It's kind of morphed more into three-story apartments with standalone commercial, which the zoning allows with waivers. And then there was a whole series of commercial zoning that only allows commercial. It doesn't allow residential, even though it's mixed use. So the property that's subject to rezoning is straight commercial. There wouldn't be residential allowed. Going back to 2003, when the city was expecting the train to come around 2015, there was a lot of planning work done. There was a framework plan, a comprehensive plan amendment, and an urban renewal plan, 2003 to 2006. Again, this, the, the idea was that this whole area here, not the whole area, but there were certain parts of the area, which were some industrial uses, and there was a vision to convert those light industrial uses into this mixed-use district. You can see where the, the train station was eventually supposed to come. We're actually still planning for that to come, and I'll give a little bit more detail on current efforts for that. And really, this led to that mixed-use overlay district. You can see this original vision for the property. It's a little hard to see, but you could probably imagine, this is the rezoning area, which is really primarily residential with, down here, you can see some intent for more of that commercial core, and then residential here, back to the train station. In 2014, the D-Lo development began under this zoning. And again, this is an urban renewal area. So this whole area is kind of the core of the urban renewal area. It goes, our urban renewal goes into downtown. It goes into South Boulder Road, but this is really the core of it. And it's really to, not just eliminate and prevent the spread of, spread of blight, which is always the core of any urban renewal area, but also to stimulate growth and reinvestment, and also get appropriate land uses. So key to having successful development is appropriate land use mix within that area. A little bit about the train. Again, I think we're continuing to implement all of these plans in this zoning, because we are still anticipating a train station at this location. Even though the original Fast Tracks plans have been significantly stalled for decades, RTD is undergoing a, what's called peak service study. So we're actually currently engaged with RTD on this study, and the idea is to accelerate service that could include a station in Louisville. So there's no timeframe on this, but it's not the decades out. It would be sooner. Three trains going into Denver in the morning, three trains coming back in the evening to try to get some of that commuter traffic and start the service. There's also Front Range Passenger Rail, which is a CDOT regional train service, and they are looking at this corridor as part of their regional service as well, which could potentially include a Louisville station. So there are very active, you know, processes which could lead to a train station at some point here in the city. So this is just a rezoning request, again, just to allow that residential mixed use on this portion of the property. The applicant has provided a concept plan. So just to be clear, this is not a, the proposed development. This is just what could be developed there under the proposed zoning. And this is, this property to the west is the, the old D-Lo Lofts property. They're proposing townhomes, basically, that would integrate into the rezoning parcel, which would be a three-story apartment under this concept plan, and a 4,000-square-foot retail center. So the, the residential zoning under our mixed-use zoning does require, well, at this size of a development, it actually doesn't require mixed use, but it strongly encourages it, and we expect mixed use. And so we would expect some commercial or office component within the development. And so we would expect some commercial or office component within the development. And so this concept, everything that we've studied with this includes a 4,000-square-foot retail component. We did work with the applicant to bring in a traffic analysis and a market analysis. We wanted to understand that if you change the zoning from commercial to the mixed-use residential, would there be significant changes in traffic congestion that would need to be mitigated? And also a market analysis, because what we've been seeing since D-Lo developed is that there are real potential market constraints, I should say, about having highway-facing commercial along the entire perimeter of the Highway 42 and South Boulder Road area. So here's the results of the traffic study. So if you actually were to develop that rezoning parcel as a strip center commercial development of 25,000 square feet versus if you had this mixed-use residential development, we'd actually see, we'd anticipate daily traffic going down overall, which is that minus 370 number. And then when you look at the AM and PM peaks, you're actually seeing a very slight increase in AM peak hour traffic, but it depends on if you're coming in and out, and then a decrease in that PM peak traffic. So the market analysis, I think, was really important in staff's analysis and recommendations. They did hire a market analysis firm to look at absorption of different uses within the market area and whether residential development seemed like it was, there was a market for that. I think anecdotally, we're seeing and hearing about a strong demand for residential, but the question is really the retail and the office. And what the market analysis showed is that the retail especially is overbuilt, and we wouldn't expect to see strong demand for retail development in the area. So I think we're faced with looking at, if we're trying to facilitate redevelopment within this area and implement the urban renewal plan, the Highway 42 revitalization area plan, and transition the area, there might be some change conditions that would warrant this rezoning. We're also looking at what would be the appropriate development to support the rail station. So in looking at the actual criteria that you all are to look at to determine if the rezoning is appropriate, there are several policies. Staff noted Policy 2 as the applicable policy that you could consider, which is the area for which the rezoning that is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it's in the public interest to encourage the redevelopment of the area. So staff notes that there are two change conditions from when this was originally rezoned that could be considered. One is that market conditions have changed. That highway-oriented commercial development that we anticipated, that we wanted, may not be supported by market conditions. The second is lack of adequate vehicle access to support that highway-oriented commercial. So one thing about really bringing in a full commercial development that's 100% commercial is access is really important. We've seen that with D-Lo Plaza. It took a long time to fill up after it was built. Those outlets haven't developed, even after we put the light in it short, and they have full movement access. We did have an access plan for all of Highway 42 that anticipated additional signalized intersections. Those are, those no longer seem viable. So we had all of these access plans for parallel roads to bring more traffic into D-Lo, as well as additional signalized intersections. Those no longer seem viable due to, you know, some constraints with what CDOT's willing to allow as well. So there's really some change conditions from that access standpoint. So here, you can see the original zoning or what's currently out there is this kind of dark red. So again, the city really wanted to have all of that perimeter along South Boulder Road and Highway 42 to be primarily, really 100% commercial, South Boulder Road and Highway 42 oriented. So I think we're looking at potentially doing more mixed use if this is approved. So it'd be more residential mixed use. So anytime we are doing a zone change, we do have a fiscal model. So this is a fiscal model we've been working with at the city for, I think, maybe eight years or so. So every time we look at a land use change, we look within the development itself and we say, what are the city, what are the costs for city services versus revenue? And what would be the net fiscal balance based on any development? And so we did look at the current zoning, which would be if we kept that as a commercial center, the rezoning parcel, and developed 45 apartment units on the old D-Lo Lofts property versus this potential rezoning and a potential development based on their concept plan. So we'd have, you know, 74 apartment units, 35 townhome units, and 4,000 square feet of retail. So really, if you look at the bottom lines here, and we always, so that we have current zoning and proposed zoning, and we always do a high and low scenario. So we assume a pretty aggressive build-out with higher values for construction cost and the cost of rent versus the low scenario, we discount a lot of those. But in the end, anytime we see a lot of residential and not a lot of sales tax generating commercial, we often do anticipate a net negative fiscal balance within that development itself, if you're looking at it in isolation. But staff is recommending that we look at a broader policy of economic vitality as, and that this type of development, although there's a negative balance within the model, based on the way the model is created, there could be broader economic benefits to the city. You know, by allowing this development, it could revitalize other areas and spur additional development. It could make the other commercial properties more viable and bring in more business as well, which could bring in more direct sales tax that isn't directly accounted for in the model. So I think that, and the other thing to note is that online sales tax is changing. We actually made some adjustments in the model recently to account for online sales tax. It's still showing that a little bit negative over time. I would note, too, that these numbers, these bigger numbers are in the thousands, but those are also over 20 years. So the annual average is just, for the current zoning, is about 24,000, for example, per year, 112,000 in the net negative is how those numbers would read there. So, you know, staff is recommending looking at the economic impact more broadly than just the fiscal model. We don't have a specific criteria about that for rezonings, but it is important to take into consideration. The Planning Commission did review this, and they are recommending approval. Staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant has a presentation as well.
Any questions for the Director? Yes, Counselor Hamilton?
Help me understand at what point in the process, it may not be right now, that affordable or workhouse, workforce housing becomes part of the conversation and equations.
So this would be subject to our inclusionary housing ordinance. So that's the one thing that we have formally right now. So 12% of the project would have to be affordable housing, either 80, 80/60 mix or all 60% area median income. We don't have a workforce housing provision as of yet. So I think, again, we're doing the housing study, and there might be some initial initiatives that could be applicable to this future development with the rezoning, but I don't want to speculate on that. That's all we have on the books right now.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Put your hand up. Counselor Lay.
You were shaking your head. I was thinking, no, you can't go, Chris. Yeah, I want to talk about the fiscal model for just a minute because you talked about the broader, some broader, potentially broader impacts. Is there a concept that you know to be activation? You're familiar with that? And if you are, can you explain it a little bit to us?
Yeah, so I, so I think when we are looking at, so I think there's a couple ways to look at this. You know, one thing is rooftops. If you bring in more rooftops and more activity within an area, that's going to activate the area. It's going to make it more attractive for other people to be there. It's going to hopefully make it more attractive. There'll be more people there, say for Rocky Mountain, Tappan Garden, who was just here, who could, you know, go walk there. But it could also be a more attractive place for the general public to say, hey, that's an interesting place to be. So it could bring in more regional, it could make it more of a regional draw as well. And I think when we're looking at redevelopment of the whole D-Lo area and trying to complete the vision and redevelopment, it could be a more attractive place where we do bring in that draw. And so I think that's part of activation. I think it also activates downtown. We, the city and the Urban Renewal Authority made a really big investment in that South Street underpass to bring people in and out of D-Lo and downtown. It's a very easy walk to the commercial core downtown.
And I guess a follow-up question is, is that concept, that activation, built in then to the fiscal model?
It, it isn't, no, I don't think the concept of activation is built into it. I do, just for transparency, that there is a, there is a residential sales tax capture that assumes they are spending money in a certain amount within the city, but it doesn't capture activation in the way we're talking about it.
Is it, I mean, is it kind of, is it easier or difficult to measure activation in the way that you're describing it?
Yeah, I don't think there's a real great way to measure activation in a formal model like our fiscal model.
Is that, does that mean there's no value then to thinking about a project like this?
I think from the staff analysis standpoint, I think there is value in looking at the broader, you know, potential positive economic impact of a development like this.
Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, so maybe answer the question, but it sounds like the fiscal model does have some sense of, we will have a positive revenue from the residents shopping at King Supers outside of the actual development, right? That this does, this does say that having more residents will bring in more revenue citywide.
Yes. So within the fiscal model itself, it does assume that, based on the income assumptions that we put into the model for the new, for the residents, that they will spend a certain amount of their income within the city, and that gets captured in the model.
Okay. And then with the model, I think, just want to make sure I understand this, too. This is current zoning, proposed zoning, but there isn't like current now, right? Like, under the current zoning, someone could build a certain thing that could bring in this money, but that's not what's coming in today.
Right. So the property right now is, is really vacant, I would say. That's part of the, I mean, this whole potential project, but the rezoning parcel specifically recently had some tenants, but it's now vacant, I believe. So, and it wasn't a, you know, it's not a sales tax generating use or residential use. It was a light industrial use.
Yeah, because I think that's one of the things that's a little misleading in general is just this, this idea of, well, gosh, if we, if we leave it as it is, this is what we get. And if we change it, then we get less. And the truth is, right now, we get almost nothing, and no one is choosing to develop it under the current zoning. You know, it's just one of those that we're keeping in mind that there's, we're not choosing necessarily between these two uses. Currently, no one is building under the current zoning. And someone is asking to build something under a different zoning that we would assume does get built. Like, there's a, you know, there's a low, a high, and a nothing, I guess, is the other piece that I'm trying to calculate, the impact of this, because I don't think it's necessarily accurate that were we to rezone, we just kind of have to stomach a little bit of a loss here. The reality between today and this new project being built would be a net positive. Is that accurate? Or it isn't? I mean, the fiscal model calls it a negative.
Right. So, yes, again, assuming this develops with residences, there are additional costs to the city, just to be clear, but there would be additional revenues. I think that, the other thing to keep in mind, this is in the urban renewal area, there would be additional tax increment that could be spent during the life of the Urban Renewal Authority. So there could be, this could actually spur further public investment within the urban renewal area as well. So there could be kind of a multiplying effect with a project like this going forward that could spur additional infrastructure or other development.
And am I right that some of these expenses are kind of the, the idea of, well, gosh, they're going to go to our rec center? If we need to build a rec center, like, what's the cost of a rec center? How much does it cost per resident? Well, if you add this many residents, that's costs, but we already have a rec center. And if anything, they're going to go spend money at that rec center. They're not, it's not, we don't have to build a new rec center when we build this. Right? I mean, I'm just a little confused with the fiscal model's assumptions. On the actual cost of these, let's say, let's say 200 people move into this area.
Yeah.
Are any of these costs real? Or are they just sort of, well, this is what a resident costs in Louisville. We have to have all these different amenities for them. We have to have roads for them, because we already have the roads.
Yes, it's very, it's, it's complex and it's imperfect, I would say, the model, and it kind of does its best to make those assumptions. But it does assume that at some point, there would have to be expansion of city services, including the rec center.
Yeah.
So there are costs associated with potential rec center expansions or service expansions in that model.
100%, and that could be this project and the next one, or whatever. They all add to it, right? I mean, it's, and so I get the idea that we want to understand what's the cost of a resident. But when we're thinking about an individual project, I think it's, again, not misleading as in you're doing anything to mislead us, but I think it's misleading sometimes to think of like, oh, wow, it's going to cost another $100,000 a year to have, well, not actually, but at some point, we might need an extra this or an extra that. Or more wear and tear on our roads. Like, these are real things, but it's not like we're going to write that check.
So having been part of the design of this fiscal model, these are incremental costs. So this is not assuming we're building a new building. These are actual incremental calculated costs. So as the Director stated early on, you look at these and say, does it create activation elsewhere? I think it's hard, you know, as Counselor Lay's saying, could you build it in the model? I think that's really tough, because every situation will be different. This is an area probably where activation is real. So I think these numbers are fairly accurate, but if you put in the activation piece, it could change the picture. But as far as the impact on these open space rec center and so forth, I think this is a tried and true model. So that's, that's my opinion. So were you done?
I would sure hope so.
So Director, you had a, you, you, stop laughing. So you, you had a slide up that was showing the potential build-out of D-Lo, and I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 units.
Of this develop, this potential development? It was, here, let me pull it up here. So this, this is the concept plan just for this parcel. So it'd be the rezoning parcel, is that what you're talking about? The rezoning parcel and the D-Lo?
Actually, I was, I was looking at whatever is still available.
Within all of D-Lo?
Yeah. And I think you had a slide, and it was somewhere around, let's just assume it's somewhere 150 with our, here's my question, though. With our inclusionary housing requirement, 150 is subject to the 12%, which would mean there's 18 units that would be required if it was all built out. So here's a tough question for you, going back to the fiscal model, because we really enjoy talking about the fiscal model. How do you take into account the inclusionary housing in this model? And I do appreciate the fact that you've adjusted the model for outside-city sales, which we know is internet sales, which is really driving our, you know, our increase in sales tax. But are you, or have you tuned this to take into account that 12% requirement?
So, yeah, so I, so what's left, just let me talk a little bit about what's left to build out in D-Lo, which you can, oh, you can't see it on the map here. I'm just looking at it. But there, there's more than 150 units, because there's the Coal Creek Station development as well, which has quite a few units potentially planned there. So we didn't make any adjustments to the So we didn't make any adjustments to the fiscal model. So theoretically, we could go in and we could create two groups of housing units. So the thing with our inclusionary housing is that if you're building onsite, they have to be at the same level. The construction cost, the, the value of the property would have to be the same, so a lot of those revenue streams during the construction are going to be the same. We're going to get the same amount of money. I think where you could adjust it was adjust the income. We may know, and we may notice adjustments to the income assumptions based on inclusionary.
Okay. Other, other questions before we, do you want to have the applicant do their presentation?
Okay. Can I expand this? Oh, maybe? Is this big enough for you guys? Yeah, maybe out of that, at least. There we go. Ah, there we go, okay.
That's great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Hunter Floyd, I'm with Live Forward Development. We're based out of Denver. First off, I want to thank you all for your time tonight. I want to thank Rob and Ellie for all the work they put together, really over the last year that we've been working on this. It's been great to work with you guys, and we feel fortunate to be here in Lewisville. We feel like it's a great community, and we've had a lot of feedback on, in this process over the last year from, from city leaders, from neighbors, from, from local business owners. And we've tried to do everything we can to really kind of listen to that feedback and put forth the first part of an ultimately much larger process and proposal in this rezone to ultimately build out what we think is right for the community and what I believe the community thinks is right for this, for this site as well. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about ourselves and just kind of talk about what we've done to date. Live Forward Development, we are primarily a boutique, multifamily, and mixed-use developer. I will say, we, we don't just do that. We like to look at sites and value and infill locations, and we like to kind of determine what should go there. We have a project in Broomfield that is kind of more like flex office project. We have other kind of retail-oriented projects in our locations. So we did initially look at this site kind of from a more commercial, with a more commercial lens on it initially, and as we started to learn more about the access, potential access issues, and frankly, listened to the community and what they thought would be right for this site, we really kind of tweaked our, our approach for the overall site. We have a, in our team, a pretty wide range of backgrounds. We have an environmental engineer, I'm an architect by trade, we have another architect on the team, we have three general contractor builders on the team. We, I think, really pride ourselves in, in design-focused projects and craftsmanship and really building a quality product because of that, because of our backgrounds. We don't come from the finance world necessarily, so it's important to us to be good stewards of, of the sites and communities and, and also for, for the residents ultimately, or tenants that we have. You know, I kind of touched on this, we build high-impact, low-intensity housing projects on challenging infill sites. That's kind of our bread and butter. We really like to engage local neighborhoods. We've taken a year, frankly, to get to this point, and, and all of that time has been primarily engaging with staff and local residents to, to give feedback. It's difficult work, but we enjoy it. As an architect by trade, I kind of like to think of myself as sort of like an investigative journalist, so go into a site or a project and first off, listen, right? And kind of take that feedback, and then we create a vision based upon kind of what the, you know, the ultimate story that's been told to us is. We, you know, we focus on design-focused projects. We also focus a lot on sustainability. We have a goal as a company of being, you know, building everything to a net zero standard by 2030. We also believe in not just environmental sustainability, but social sustainability, mental and, and emotional health, and frankly, fiscal sustainability. And we think, although the fiscal model is, is, you know, is its own tool, we do believe that this would support local business in a strong way and would, as you said the word, activate not just this site, but other local businesses in the area and on Main Street. I included this slide just as kind of a little bit further information on, on our backgrounds. We've worked not only on a lot of kind of smaller infill sites, but we've also worked on quite a few public projects in our careers, so everything from airports to large kind of mixed-use master plan communities, big, big retail destinations, and large public campuses. So because of that background, I think we don't necessarily just think about the individual site, we like to think about the overall community, the overall planning effort, and it's important, particularly when you're working on these little infill sites that are so community-focused that you have that perspective, and, and absolutely, we do. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about what we've done over the last year, where we started, some of the feedback we've received, and I'm going to keep it short, because it's late, and, and Rob and Ellie frankly already put together a really good presentation and just kind of opened it up for questions for you guys. But over the last year, we've, we've been engaging with the neighborhood, immediate neighbors, and their homeowner associations, the Downtown Business Association, we presented to them, we presented to the LRC, we've talked to multiple local business owners, probably 15 or 20 local business owners, and then of course, the, the city. Initially, when we took control of this site, obviously, there was a previous developer that looked at the D-Lo West side of the site, and I, maybe they didn't quite listen to the neighborhood as much as they should have, and we, we saw that. We paid attention to that city council meeting from a year ago, a little over a year ago. And so we reached out to those people, everybody that spoke up in that meeting, that was the first thing that we did. We said, hey, we'd love to talk to you, hear what your concerns are, what you think would be right for this site. And ultimately, we met with the neighborhood group and, and had kind of a visioning session, really, like, we just sat down and, and listened and took notes, and, and we had a couple of different meetings like that. And out of those meetings, we kind of came up with this list of concerns and requests. So the concerns they had were lack of green space, something absolutely, we believe, will be a strong addition with what we provide, certainly compared to the existing use, which is a, used to be an explosive testing facility, and is now, you know, we do have, there's one tenant out there, we have a steel fabricator out there, so they're welding and grinding and doing steel fabrication currently, which you might argue is not necessarily the best use for this location. They do great work, I will say. Hopefully, we can use them when we actually build something. But adding green space to, to the current site, adding green space for our residents as well as the overall community is something that drives demand, frankly, and drives residents to want to be at the site, and I think makes us good neighbors. Dog use was something that was brought up a lot, where people take their dogs to walk, what they do with their dog stuff after they walk them, certainly something we've listened to and will be, and make sure to address. One of the other things was kind of higher density along Cannon Street. So Cannon Street, as you know, right now, as it gets a little further north to Griffith, is kind of more of like a town, there are townhouses across the street, right? So the previous developer had proposed, you know, three-story apartments, really as close to the property line as possible, right along Cannon Street. So we came back and said, all right, we listened to that, let's just make it the same scale. Essentially, we'll put townhouses along Cannon Street so that there is that kind of similar feel on both sides of the street. And as you get closer to the highway, that's, you know, a little bit more insulated from that community, and honestly, from the Little Italy community as well, we can have, you know, more like the D-Lo apartments, three-story kind of walk-up apartments there. The other thing that was a real concern was retail commercial viability. Residents had seen D-Lo apartments struggle to get retail on the ground floor, they'd seen D-Lo Plaza struggle for a while. As, has been mentioned before in this meeting, D-Lo Plaza's current BUD that you're mending actually had two retail pad sites along Highway 42, but obviously haven't been developed. I think it's great that there's a beer garden going there, by the way. Hopefully, we'll be there in, you know, 30 minutes or an hour when we're done tonight, if they're still open. No. And so they, they were very concerned about, you know, retail viability for the site, as were we, frankly. Traffic and safety is a concern with any development. I think every time you, you know, add something new, add a new building, really doesn't matter what it is, single-family, multifamily, retail, commercial, it's always something that gets brought up. And then connectivity. So currently, Cannon Street goes essentially from Short Street to Griffith Street, and there's no connectivity between those two streets to Highway 42, something that I know the previous developer wanted to do but wasn't able to do, because they didn't have control of this site that we're discussing tonight. We've made sure to address that, and, and what we want to do is build what will be Caledonia Street there, that will add another outlet from Cannon Street to Highway 42. And then the requests, affordable housing, important to every city in the country right now, it's a real issue. As you guys know, you're a primarily-for-sale housing market, and your average home sale price is about $820,000. That's about $6,000 a month for a mortgage. I don't know many employees on Main Street that could afford that, I can't afford that. That's, so, important to provide attainable and affordable housing, both in the technical form of, you know, AMI, restricted housing, and also just housing that is actually, you know, more attainable than a $6,000 a month mortgage. Adilities for residents, absolutely something that's important to us and for them, but they wanted to make sure that the residents had, you know, beautiful community space with, with nice amenities. We touched on dogs and outdoor space, that's important. And then lastly, as a request, more compatible use of the site than is currently there, which is a steel yard and, you know, majoritively blighted at this point. And then next, we, we kind of reached out and had kind of like a goal, like a survey monkey, a goal survey, and we came up with a whole list of, you know, different words and goals and aspirations for it, and, and did a whole survey within the community, and this is what came out of that. Their important kind of aspirations for the, for the site, number one being sustainability, number two, local sense of place and walkability, two and three actually was a tie, and number four, a connected community and, and street connectivity, all things that we think we are absolutely adding to this picture in this, in this neighborhood, in this area, given the opportunity to develop, you know, residential-focused mixed-use property. I want to throw this on there because I think it's important not to look at the names necessarily, but to show that we really have support of, I can't think of a single person that we've spoken to in the immediate neighborhood that hasn't either written us a letter of support or had good conversations with us and are excited about this development. We've also, you know, had letters of support from the Downtown Business Association, multiple local business owners, I think we had six more probably come in today. I'm unaware of a, of a letter in opposition, so I think ultimately, we have a lot of community support for this project, and honestly, that's kind of rare. But I guess, you know, when you, when you spend a year and, and frankly, you do something that I think is appropriate for this site, people tend to be in support. As a summary, you know, this is consistent with the city's vision and the plans for the area. Initially, when this was master planned, is the Highway 42 area, this was all envisioned in their specific language in that that you can see in the packet, as a residential-focused mixed-use area called the Pecan Square District specifically. So we believe this is consistent with the vision, it's absolutely neighborhood-supported, we can provide much-needed housing in the form of attainable housing and technical affordable housing. It's the correct use for the site access, neighborhood connectivity. Didn't touch on this, I think Rob maybe did a little bit with the Highway 42. Current design, there's a median proposed along Highway 42, which would only give us right-in, right-out access to the site, very challenging for any retail site, there's no intersection there, you can only go right in, right out, no left turns. Also, this is supportive of local business, not in competition with local business. We're supporting Main Street with more residents that can walk to Main Street, we're supporting D-Lo Plaza, more residents can walk there. Frankly, in this site, you can walk to King Supers. That's, that's rare to be able to walk to a grocery store, and so we hope that we'll have a good number of residents that don't own cars. Now, they work from home, they work on Main Street, you know, they can, they can walk to their restaurants, they can walk to work, they can walk to their grocery store, they can walk across the street to a park, a lot of things that, you know, we think not only are supportive of local business, but also are supportive of a sustainable vision for the city and reducing the carbon footprint of the residents in this area. And I touched on this in my previous statement, increased walkability for the community's core, adding more residents to the businesses there and, and providing an opportunity and a location where people can truly walk. I think that's, that's, that's really it. I want to say thank you for your time, and again, thanks to Rob and Ellie and everybody that's worked with us to this point. Try to keep it as short as I can and open it up for any questions.
Any questions for Hunter before we go to public comment? Counselor, turn.
Thank you. I appreciate you actually working on this. I like the idea of adding mixed use into our community, and I think a lot of residents are echoing that. I mean, it's a statewide issue, and Lewisville would really like to make decisions for Lewisville, so it's a really good proposal and a good idea. I do echo what Barb was saying. I, sorry, Councilwoman Hamilton, I apologize, I'm a little too casual, I guess. So with the affordable housing piece of this, I, I understand, you know, as Director Sakaro said, we have a 12% requirement. Should we make changes moving forward and increase that requirement, or put something in place for some workforce housing? This would be an ideal location for people who work in Lewisville and are of lower income to have an opportunity to exactly that, not have to buy a car, to be able to walk to, to the supermarket. How does that work into this plan? And maybe I'm getting ahead, maybe it's too soon to talk about that, but...
It, I can let Rob answer this to some extent, but because we are just talking about the reason at this point, we're really just talking about use, we can't necessarily get into the affordable housing piece. That said, if we build out something close to what we're showing right now, there will be 12% of those units that will be affordable, both in the townhouses and in the apartment community. You want to add anything to that, Rob?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I, I think that because this is just a rezoning, we don't know what the development will be, or what our affordable housing ordinances might look like when this development comes through. I do think some of, just to add a little bit of context to, you know, some of the things that we are looking for with affordable housing are alternatives to transportation, because that can impact how, you know, your overall cost of living. So having a walkable mixed-use, hopefully someday transit-supported neighborhood also helps with affordability, so that is part of the vision as well.
A big affordability piece to me, too, is also the fact that you guys are willing to do this. We're talking about meeting net zero requirements.
As, as a company goal, we would like to meet net zero requirements by 2030. We, we have a project in Denver right now that we're going through a sustainability certification. We intend to go through a sustainability certification with this project as well.
Yeah, that was probably, my, my big questions were that. I just wasn't sure how that would impact. I don't want it to be where we come back, or you want, you rezone, and then you come forward with a plan in a year or two years, whatever it is, and then you're like, oh, well, I didn't like, if I was going to have to be 18% public, you know, affordable housing. So I just don't want that to be something where you guys are sitting here, coming to us wanting to rezone with an idea in mind, but you know what you will or won't do, and it's like, mm.
Well, you know, ultimately, it has to be financeable, right? It has to be something that we can build, so that's going to dictate whether or not anything gets built, frankly. We know that as we get through the PRUD process, and we have a lot more things to talk about with you guys, that there's going to be a lot of conversations about how much affordable housing can go into this, and, you know, and I think there's probably a trade-off between potential, you know, density waivers maybe and having more than 12% affordable housing. I don't want to get, I don't want to cloud this discussion with that, because really, this is about use at this point. We are certainly aware of that and know and hope that we will be able to have those discussions.
One more, and it's a use question. The 4,000 square foot of retail space versus the number of apartments and townhouses, how did you guys derive that to be a good amount of space?
So four thousand square feet, really kind of what we were thinking about there is like some small level of co-working space. So whether that's a membership model where we work with another co-working vendor or it's just part of the kind of amenities space for the apartments, we don't know yet. We, we use that as a piece of it, so call it fifteen hundred square feet. And then the other twenty-five hundred square feet is, is similar to kind of other restaurants that we've worked on and worked with. We have a restaurateur in Denver that actually just won a BIP-Gourmand Award that we've been working with that's excited about this, and so we could potentially, so we did have some feedback from them on kind of the sizing of the restaurant. All that is still up in the air at this point, but that, those are the discussions, and that's kind of how we got to that number.
Thank you. And again, thanks for your work.
Hey, welcome, by the way.
Counselor Lay?
Yeah, I just, I thought, raised something that got raised at Planning Commission, maybe you could explain it a little bit for all of us. There were some comments at Planning Commission around traffic. And if you could kind of just walk us through a little bit of your, you know, your general observations, there's materials that we have here on that, but I guess I'd like to know a little bit about your, your, your take on that.
I think, you know, generally, our traffic study and any traffic study is going to show that commercial use is going to be a heavier traffic use than residential use. I think those numbers are actually skewing even more towards heavier traffic with commercial in this day and age because we have so many more people working from home, and that hasn't been fully reflected in those traffic studies quite yet. So if we're talking about what the zoning would allow for current zoning, commercial mixed-use, which is really just commercial zoning versus what we're asking for, the current zoning would provide, if built out, more traffic than the proposed zoning. To, you know, there are certainly other things that we're going to have to work through. We believe that Caledonian, so does our traffic engineer, and the community feels strongly about this, too, adding that other outlet to Highway forty-two will take some pressure off of the Cannon Street and Griffith Street intersection, which is important. And, and we know also with the Highway forty-two vision that there's some solutions, some solutions that are coming online there, potentially with the traffic signal at Cannon, or sorry, Highway forty-two and Griffith Street in addition to the Caledonia that could help solve that problem in this area, and we're, we know we're going to have to work collectively, not, we can't solve it, you guys need sort of private development help to some degree, too, to help solve it. So it's going to be a collective effort between us and you all and CDOT, frankly.
One just comment that I would add is, I, I really very much appreciate the process that you went through here. I think it's a model, actually. I, I know you've been doing it for a while. I think, I mean, I, I went through a presentation at the LRC early on, this kind of came before you, I think you even submitted a plan, so it was sort of a dry run at a concept plan. And, but you had already done a whole bunch of spade work with the neighborhood, and that's a really, I mean, it's an important neighborhood for me because there are constituents there, but it's also really important, I mean, there's a real sense of place there for the people who are there. And I, I just think you did a terrific job about both showing them the kind of respect that I would hope everybody would, but I think in historical terms, haven't always. And I think all of the other kinds of inquiries that you made and so forth, I, I applaud that irrespective of the rezoning. I mean, I know we, we've got to focus on that, but I do want to, I think it's worth calling out. Thanks.
Thank you. Honestly, it's, it's been a pleasure getting to know so many people in the city of Louisville. It's, you guys have an awesome community, super well-educated and intelligent and thoughtful and, and really engaged and caring about what happens in their community. So it's been, it's been a pleasure, honestly.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to public comment at this point in time, so this will be the first round of public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name, and if you are a Louisville resident. First up is Joshua Cooperman.
Josh Cooperman, I live in Louisville. I very much support rezoning this parcel to mixed-use residential. I think it's a great location to redevelop into primarily residential use. There are a few reasons why I think so. First of all, putting housing in this place would be a, would really make for some great, for really great sustainable housing. Not only would the density be a little bit higher, which is, general makes for the housing more sustainable, but people who live there could walk to downtown, could walk to all the businesses along South Boulder Road, they could also bike to them, and if there's ever a rail station, they could also walk right to that one. Secondly, I think having more residential in this location would be really good, sorry, for supporting the businesses that these people could walk or bicycle to in downtown and again, along South Boulder Road. It would hopefully be a place where employees who maybe work in downtown or along South Boulder Road could live, and I think that would help our businesses by being able to retain and find employees more easily. And that could also cut some of the commuting that we have currently into Louisville. It would also, as has been noted, provide some more customer base for the, the businesses in the area, which would all be great. Yeah, so then I think the last reason that I'm really quite in favor of this rezoning is the potential for it to provide affordable housing as well, and I really hope that it does. So I'll just finish up by saying that I would really like to see the city consider this type of rezoning more widely and even proactively. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a public comment? Mike?
Mike DeBorski, six oh one Pine Street here in Louisville, backing up a couple of items. I delivered the paper at six oh one Lincoln Street at that house, and it was a challenge to, to thread the paper through the trees and weave it between the pillars on the porch. And it also happened to be the hardest place to get collected. I felt like the kid from Better Off Dead chasing his two dollars. So as far as this topic goes, and number one, I really like the faces I see on the dais now, and I'm very encouraged on how we're going to move forward as a council, and I appreciate you all investing the time to do the job because it's, it's a big commitment. So thank you. As far as commitment goes, I live forward. I sat on Planning Commission twenty years ago when this comp plan was done for this area. I spent a lot of time out there, recused, but nonetheless, I, I was engaged in the process and I was aware of what transpired. We did not foresee that Highway forty-two would become a right-in, right-out only. And for that reason, it did cannibalize the opportunities to create a lot of commercial that otherwise was planned. So, you know, times changed, the needs of the community changed. We want bike lanes, we want pedestrian lanes, and that's a trade-off we made between that and the commercial. So it makes a lot of sense that, how we got to where we are today. As far as the fiscal model goes, it's a tool, you know, we're, we all have to make decisions every day, whether it's at home or Public Works or our Parks Department, it's cost to benefit, you know, what, where's the value in this thing? So it's a great tool to use. But at the same time, you know, if, if we only looked at the fiscal model and the negative impacts, none of our neighborhoods would be built that most of us live in today. I know that myself and my siblings wouldn't be, wouldn't have had the opportunity to live in Louisville, and certainly we all like for our kids to have that option someday, too. As far as live forward goes, there again, on Planning Commission, and since then, I've been a groupie, and I've watched this Planning Commission meetings and council meetings, more so out of survival as far as the long-term impact to our property, but I have yet to see an applicant engage the community the way that these guys have. I mean, they've really made the effort to, to talk to the neighbors and really listen and, and figure out what they need to do, and I do appreciate the time they've spent and, and certainly the efforts they've made to accommodate for our needs. I highly recommend approval of this project moving forward, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Seeing none, we do have somebody on Zoom, so it's three oh three seven eight six eight two two six.
Good evening, this is Sherri Summer, and I'm a Louisville resident. I have some things for you to consider as you deliberate tonight. I've been out campaigning, and many, many people are concerned about housing affordability. People, people who own homes and are seeing their property taxes go way up, I think the fiscal model is something we need to consider, and we need to consider housing affordability for our existing residents. I appreciated the comments on affordable housing that were made tonight. I kind of wonder about the order of operations here, what we're doing with zoning change as a concept plan. Some of these things that, that are being presented, they're normally be done at the P U D phase, and so I, I, I have no reason to doubt the applicant sincerity, I've heard great things about them, we've seen that to neighbors, but I think it's very important that we stick with what has been said tonight regarding housing affordability, attainable, affordable, and, and all of those things that have been discussed with those developments. Regarding traffic, with the Planning Commission, I believe that, it was said that CDOT recommends against this proposal, so I'd like a clarification from that, if that's possible. I do know that the neighbors were concerned about the, the previous redevelopment plan at D-Lo, the one where it wasn't much listening, and I do think there should be a comprehensive traffic plan, or traffic study of this area and possible redevelopment at the other side of D-Lo and Polk Creek Station, because there's going to be a lot more traffic in this area. I appreciate it, Councilmember Dickinson's comments on the tipping point of our facilities, we're already out of office space, and I, I think that's important to think about as we approve things. We talked about activation of the area. I really see Tappan Garden and that whole, you know, plaza as being a great addition to the area, and I wonder if that wouldn't activate this area to be more successful with commercial, with restaurants and all of those things, because, I mean, things take time, but good things take, good things take time. Let's see here, I do wonder if there would be like a, I forgot the exact word, the concurrent requirement for development and the mixed-use requirement, because I do think it's important that we have places where people can walk easily from apartments in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This concludes the first round of public comment. We'll go to council comments, and then we'll have a second round of public comment. Counselor Hefner?
Yeah, just, just briefly, I want to share my thinking, which is, I'm sitting here looking at policy for rezoning number two, that the area has changed or is changing to such a degree that it's in the public interest to encourage redevelopment. And sitting here thinking about that, I mean, it's just clearly met to me from when this was originally zoned in 2015. I think it would be hard to say that the area and circumstances haven't changed dramatically. We've recently heard from our housing consultant that we're underproducing housing at a pretty dramatic rate, and I'm persuaded by the presentation at the end of our packet as to the many hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail and office-based vacancies within a fifteen-minute drive that we're just not going to get the kind of development that it's zoned for now. So just wanted to share my current thinking, that, that's all I have. Thanks, everyone, for the good presentations.
Do you want to go back to second round of public comment? All right, second round of public comment. Anyone in the chambers? No? Anyone on Zoom? All right, we're back to council. Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, I think there's good conversation around where we are and where we aren't in the process, right? And so I think it is a little hard because, kind of want to have a vision of what we will see when we go through this, but then we're not actually at that point yet, right? So we want to know about sustainability, we want to know about housing and affordable housing and all these things, and that's not for today. But I think it wouldn't make sense if we didn't have some visioning of, of what, of what is, you know, potentially to come. And so, you know, I think to Dietrich's point, you know, we, we need, we do need housing, we do need affordable housing, and I think that that is definitely coloring my support for this is just the idea that that is, that is much more of a possibility with this rezoning than what we currently have right now. So what I understand right now is we have a dead spot that doesn't have a lot of potential for development currently, and we have a potential for something. In all fairness, I, I talked about the difference between nothing and something from a financial model. So from a traffic model, there's no traffic going on there right now, so yes, if it got developed entirely commercial, there'd be more traffic than this, but we are going to see more traffic because this gets successfully redeveloped than we are seeing today. So I think we just need to understand that, that there will be an increase in traffic and maybe less than if something else was successful. But if I'm going to argue that on one thing, I need to be fair about the opposite. But I'm comfortable with that, you know, people bring that, and I do think, hopefully this is a transit-oriented space where there's maybe less traffic than typical for this quantity of residential. And, and I certainly hope as we get to the next stage, without fully talking about the next stage, I, I hope when we get to that, that there are thoughts around how to maximize the affordability, both with the, what we call capital-A affordable housing and then the small-A affordable housing, that smaller units are more affordable. And if you have to build everything the same, building things, what we don't want as a community, I've heard, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself, is luxury apartments that we bought, we, we built a hundred and fifty million-dollar luxury apartments, that's not the point. So as you guys move into that next stage and you're thinking about what you're doing, how do you bring that small-A, how do you bring that big-A affordable housing? Because they're both valuable, and, and some of it's very, very easy to do, but you might need our help in, in continuing to talk about how to, how to increase that density or decrease other, other pieces that make it difficult. But I think this is, I think this is a really good process, and I do appreciate all the comments and, and Mike DeBorski, your comments around the engagement with the, with the residents and with the neighboring businesses and neighboring people, I think that is, it's, it's really valuable, it's valuable to us, because when it gets to us, there is, yes, you get less yelling and, and upset with what we're looking at because you've put in the time to have those conversations, and hopefully it isn't window dressing, it's like, no, what do you want? Because we can build lots of things, and if we can get on the same page about what we're building, then there's less, there's less tension, and it actually just is a good project. And I didn't see the eight pickleball courts, but I'm sure you'll add that.
Well, first off, I want to, I want to thank the director and the planning staff that worked with you and the applicant. It was an excellent presentation, and much like Counselor Dickinson, you know, I, I think what we're doing tonight is rezoning, but for me, it's rezoning with hope. And you heard from almost all of my colleagues about affordable housing and, and things like that, and so, you know, I think, I like what's being proposed, I think it's the right product, it's very different. You know, I was part of council a year ago or whenever it was, and we said that's the wrong product. I think we're looking more towards the right product. I want to thank the applicant for the work with the process, I think that's really important, engaging the community is really important. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Planning Commission for thoroughly vetting this. So we have something, you know, good work done by the Planning Commission, and so I think that's important. One message that I would give to the applicant is, you know, we approved a concept planning process, was it a month ago, something like that? So as we look forward, if we're talking about additional affordable housing, you know, with height considerations or whatever that might be, I think you have a council who will very much entertain that and do it in a collaborative sort of way. So I'm, I'm certainly ready to support this. Other comments? Counselor Lay?
Yeah, the last thing I would, I would say, or if, I don't know if there's going to be anybody else, I was going to move the passage, but I think what I- else, I was going to move the passage, but I think what I didn't say before exactly was, I was reminded by Councilmember Dickinson, I mean, there's a lot more that we agree on than we disagree on. And I think what, you know, part of my worry about where we've been in the last few years is that we've made enemies out of people that shouldn't have been enemies. And why I'm so enthusiastic about this process is you've just done a proof of concept, right? That that doesn't need to be the case. And I really appreciate that, because that makes our job a lot easier, but it also tends to be, as Councilmember Dickinson, there's just, there's less grumbliness. And we've had that in the past, we don't have it now. So I'm going to move passage of ordinance number, if it's okay?
Absolutely, you can do whatever you want.
Well, I don't know about that. I'm going to move passage of ordinance number 1864, series 2023, and ordinance approving rezoning of Lot 10, Block 1 and out Lot 1 of DLOLOF's final subdivision plot from commercial community CC to mixed-use residential M U R, and approving an amendment to exhibit a land use plan exhibit referenced in Lewisville Municipal Chapter 17.14, mixed-use zone districts.
Second.
Discussion. I'm going to close the public hearing. Call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Faghi?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to regular business E, recommended budget for 2024, including updated capital improvements plan for 2023 through 2028, and updated long-term financial plan for 2023 through 2028. This is a public hearing. And we'll open the public hearing and ask the director for a presentation.
If you don't mind while he's getting set up, I've just got some, excuse me, remarks I wanted to make, and because I have a little bit of brain fog going on, I actually have a written script, which is unusual for me, so I'm calling myself out.
Could you read really fast?
I'm going to read as fast as I can.
City manager, you've had COVID-19. This isn't a generalized brain fog, right? You might give a little bit of context there.
Thank you for clarifying. Just want to note, while we've had four budget hearings, discussions, I should say, to date with city council, and some public comments that have already been provided, tonight we're presenting the budget for official public hearing as required by law. Let's start by thanking city council, Director Bailey, and this finance team, all of our leadership team for all of your work on the 2024 proposed budget. I also appreciate the patience and understanding from everyone along the way. Our budget process last year was challenging, given all the new Marshall Fire recovery expenditures and priorities, along with the personal challenges following my accident. I hoped this year would be smoother, but given the transition in our finance department, our leadership team, and all the work they've done improving our utilization of our financial software platform, this year has also been a bit challenging. However, the budget process is always challenging. In a context where operational expenditures are outpacing operational revenues within an organization in a community with high expectations, finding the balance among all these competing priorities within the guidelines of our financial policies presents a multitude of areas for policy debate and fiscal stewardship as staff and council work through this process. I'm very pleased with the thoughtful dialogue amongst council and appreciate council challenging us to do our very best. Thank you. We're very close to the finish line, and are anticipating adoption of the 2024 budget on November 6th. Do note that this is a Monday meeting due to the election on November 7th for the public. This is an important thing, so I want to make sure everybody knows it's a Monday, not a Tuesday. I would also note that while we anticipate adoption on November 6th, we will still have additional work to do in the following months. There's still many moving parts around the property tax mill levy setting, the mill levy rate with Proposition HH and final property assessments and all of that. While I'm confident with the conservative projected revenues as proposed, we'll have some math to do towards the end of the year to finalize that actual mill levy rate. Also, we'll have to roll up our sleeves again, beginning in late November, to prepare a budget amendment based upon the outcome of the open space and parks sales and use tax ballot question. This will probably take us most of the first quarter to get through that. That's going to be an important piece of work for council in the first part of 2024. And since I was so brief at this point, I will ask our finance director Bailey to provide a presentation on the proposed 2024 budget.
Thank you, City Manager Jeff Durbin. Appreciate that introduction. Good evening, council members. I'd like to welcome you, staff and other attendees, to the City Manager's 2024 Final Recommended Budget Presentation. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank finance, city staff, my fellow directors for their contributions in preparing this budget. It's a significant lift with multiple iterations over the past three months as we've worked towards today. I also want to thank and recognize your council for the significant time commitment made towards developing this budget. With that, I will begin with an outline of this evening's agenda. Based on feedback from four previously held budget hearings, staff is presenting the 2024 City Manager's Final Recommended Budget. We'll begin with the introduction and next steps. We'll revisit our priorities, issues, and city manager enhancements, present a structurally balanced general fund budget, a revised general fund long-term financial forecast, we'll touch on budgeted inter-fund transfers, and the remaining funds' long-term financial forecasts. A brief reminder of where we've been and our next steps. We've met on July 18th with our budget retreat. On September 5th, you heard the City Manager's initial recommended budget presentation. In September, we held two budget special meetings. Today is the City Manager's Final Recommended Budget, with adoption scheduled for Monday, November 6th. Other future steps, depending on the results of Proposition HH and the Boulder County Assessor releasing final certification values, staff will prepare for council's approval of the final mill levies. That's in December or January, depending on those timelines. In early 2024, staff will return with a budget amendment following the results of the open space and parks ballot measure 2C. The city strives to deliver a high level of service within the constraints of its available resources. A few notable priorities and issues given consideration in the development of the 2024 budget are as follows: the Marshall Fire recovery mitigation, open space and parks ballot measure, our commitment towards sustainability and decompensation of our city facilities, economic vitality, affordable housing, our personnel expenditures, and a reminder of our reliance on the Superior Library IGA for our existing service levels at our library. The city manager has included the following enhancements to the city's 2024 recommended budget because of their significance or from previous council direction. Under information technology, enhanced security measures, and Office 365 licenses, as well as a police department server upgrade. Under public safety, police department mental health co-responder pilot program. Under community development, comprehensive plan, land development code rewrite. And under the Parks and Open Space Fund, our prost master plan, as well as enhanced mitigation efforts. The city manager has included the following personnel enhancements in this budget. A reminder that the first three, the recovery and resiliency manager, mitigation coordinator, and the sustainability coordinator, have all been approved in 2023 and have been filled. The fourth, court communications, is to address the pending state mandate to allow for remote access to criminal court proceedings. The financial analyst, parks and open space communications position, as well as the IT public works utility positions are all currently in the 2024 budget as personnel expansions. At this time, I'd like to briefly revisit our citywide budget at a very high level. Broken out by program, here's the 2024 citywide recommended budget expenditures. I'll start down here. About 50% of the city's 2024 budget is public works, transportation, and utilities. Public works, transportation includes engineering, transportation planning, street maintenance, including the pavement booster program, snow and ice removal, sign maintenance, streetscapes. And utilities are water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste. Continuing clockwise, parks and open space and recreation accounts for approximately 18% of our citywide budget. Cultural services is about 4%. This includes a library, museum, art center, Stein Ball Pavilion. Economic vitality is a sliver right there, about 1%. 13% for admin and support. This includes our city manager's office, city council, communication, clerk, finance, HR, IT, legal, sustainability, and municipal electrification. Continuing along, community design is our community development department, which you've heard from a bunch tonight. And lastly, on our pie chart, is public safety and justice. This is our court, code enforcement, and police department. Since September 26th, city manager's office, fiscal, and department staff have worked towards structurally balancing the general funds budget, and we can state that we are presenting a structurally balanced budget for the general fund tonight. On September 26th, the variance between total revenues and total expenses was approximately 1.1 million. Since then, staff has made the following adjustments, has made adjustments to the following accounts. We revised interest earnings based on revenue projections, as well as revising property tax revenue on projections. We've reduced budgeted city attorney expenses to better align with expenditure trends, as well as community development abatement expenses, again, to align with expenditure trends. Staff has previously identified the following non-recurring expenses as an acceptable use of fund balance. This is the police department mental health co-responder pilot program, the community development land code rewrite, bag tax available fund balance for programmatic expenditures, public works on-call development review support, and the PD IT server room. This slide demonstrates the long-term financial forecast for the general fund. With the adjustments I just mentioned ran through the model, along with a few other assumptions that I'll touch on in the next few slides. Looking specifically at 2024, the dark green bar are revenues, the lighter green bar are expenditures, the delta between these two bars are those one-time expenditures, thus representing a structurally balanced budget for 2024. And looking at the yellow bar, which is fund balance, you'll know that it's diminishing over time, but for the duration of the forecast exceeding the both reserves, the minimum reserve, which is this orange line, which is 15% of operating expenditures, and this white dotted line, which is 25% of our operating expenditures. A significant expenditure category of that model and the entire city are our city employees. From 2023 to 2024, an increase of FDEs by seven, which we've touched on earlier, from 284 FDEs to 291. In 2024, total budgeted wages, full-time, variable overtime are about 23.5 million. While projections in the out-years include about 4% growth. In 2028, we're at 27.3 million for salaries. Another significant expenditure category are our benefits. We are expecting about 4.4% year-over-year growth when compared to 2023. In total, about 6 million for employee benefits. This is about 20% of total salary and benefit cost. In future years, we're anticipating between 5.5% and 7% growth in this expenditure category. I'd like to touch on the 2023 spike here. This is attributable to the city's making changes, modifications to the public safety retirement contribution, and a 10% budgeted increase in our health benefits, which was later negotiated down to 4%. So when these become actuals, this spike won't be so great. Talking about those assumptions in the general fund long-term financial model, we've revised future sales tax revenue projections to include 5% growth in the out-years. For the 2024 budget, we're expecting 23.3 million in total sales tax revenue, which is a 5% increase over the prior year, 2023 budgeted amount of 22.1 million. The green bars are our total sales tax revenue, while the white line is our year-over-year percentage change, and you could see some impacts from COVID, recovery, pretty robust, and then, again, the out-years at 5%. Throughout our previous budget presentations, there's been much discussion about property tax. Based on your feedback contained within the City Manager's Final Recommended Budget, this includes a 16% reduction in mill levies. This is to assist our residents in offsetting increased value assessments from the Boulder County Assessor's Office. In future years, we will right-size the rec center debt mill levy to align with the debt payments. Final mills will be set once staff receives final certification from the Boulder County Assessor. In out-years, we are projecting 4% revenue growth. So the green bars, again, are total revenue over time, the white line are our mill levies over time. Here's that 16% reduction in 2024, right-sizing for debt for the rec center mill levy, and then continuing to right-size that mill levy to align with debt payments. On this slide, I'll summarize the 2024 budgeted inter-fund transfers. These amounts are unchanged from the biennial budget adopted in November of 2022 and all previously held budget hearings on the 2024's budget. These transfers are driven by an alignment with our city's financial reserve policies. So I'll just explain how this works real quickly. On the left-hand side, you've got transfers out. On the top, you've got transfers in. So you could see these transfers out from the general fund into the open space and parks fund, the cemetery fund, and the recreation fund. These are subsidies from the general fund to those other funds. Going down these rows, the cemetery perpetual care fund, the endowment fund shifts funding to the cemetery operating fund. The historic preservation fund sends funding to our general fund for museum services and our cultural services. The capital projects fund sends funding to the recreation fund for capital expenditures in alignment with our reserve policies. And lastly, the impact fee funds, these are received and distributed to parks and public works based on actuals collected for projects eligible for this funding. Up next, we'll go through each of the following fund's long-term financial forecasts. Beginning with the capital fund. The city has significant amount of capital project expenditures this year and the next year, exceeding 20 million each year. This, along with the 3 million net of offsetting grants, added newly added capital project expenditures results in the fund's fund balances to be depleted by 2026. The capital fund does not have a minimum reserve balance policy, and a reminder that the entire CIP program will be reconsidered as part of the 2025-2026 budget development process. As such, staff is not recommending any adjustments at this time. We could remove newly requested CIP project costs in out-years, or some, or all projects entirely, and doing so would impact the forecast and increase future fund balance levels. This may be better demonstrated on this slide. Here's the complete list of newly requested CIP out-of-cycle capital projects currently in the city manager's recommended budget. Approximately 7 million in total, 3 million net of grants over the next five years. Again, these new projects are a primary driver of the low-ending fund balance in 2026. If we remove out-year costs of these new projects, that would increase your 2026 fund balance by about 800,000, and that would allow us to get started on these projects right away. Reductions of additional 2024 capital project requests would increase that fund balance in 2026 by approximately the same amount. Again, the full CIPU program will be evaluated as part of the 25-26 budget process. Staff is recommending to retain all newly added projects while continuously monitoring the fund's fund balance. The utility funds, one moment. The utility funds' financial forecast is unchanged from prior presentations and in compliance with its reserve policy over the duration of the forecast. Public works and finance are closely watching funds' revenues and expenses as we approach year-end, and we will provide an update in early 2024. The golf fund financial forecast is also unchanged from recent presentations and is projected to remain in compliance with the fund balance policy throughout the forecast. This does assume some future capital expenditures will land in the capital fund, not the golf fund. And lastly, for the Open Space and Parks Fund, a reminder that a status quo budget with parks and open space in the same fund as it is today is being recommended as a starting point for 2024. This is to ensure seamless operations of both of these divisions. Because of the various scenarios of the pending ballot measure 2C, running a long-term financial model on the status quo budget doesn't yield consumable results. Therefore, no fund financial forecast is being presented at this time. However, upon the outcome of the results of the ballot measure in early 2024, council will be asked to modify the status quo budget to align with the measure's outcome. Estimates displayed are preliminary and very high-level. Financial and Parks staff will perform further and depth analysis upon the results of the ballot measure, and will turn to your council early next year. With that, I would like to thank you for your attention, and we are available to answer any questions we may have.
Shall we go to public comment first? Let's do that. Any public, let's see. You didn't sign up for E. Any other public comments? Public comment on Zoom? All right. Counsel, questions, comments? So just a reminder, this is our last real work session with the budget. What we'll be doing on November 6th is really a formality to approve the budget. Counselor Dickinson.
Great work. I know this is exhausting, I'm sure. And I think we've, four years into this job, we understand, I understand that this is like the most important thing we do, right up there with who we choose as our city manager. I mean, there really are two biggest decisions, right? Like the budget and who runs the show. And so this is really important, and you guys have put a ton of work into it, and I appreciate the changes that have been made and the tweaks to get us in compliance with our charter, or maybe misstating that, our fiscal policies. I really have nothing at this point. I mean, I think we've gone round and round a bunch on this, and I think this reflects all the things that we have been talking about, and everything makes sense to me and looks good. I wrote down and appreciate the quote, "align with expenditure trends." I think that makes a lot of sense to make some tweaks that accurately align with what we're seeing in the data. So thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you. Counselor Hefner.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. Thanks for sticking with us from when we started in July. I'm sure you started much, much earlier than that to the present, and, you know, I think you've really landed in a good place here and a place I hope we can all support.
Counselor Hamilton.
I don't have any questions tonight because you've done such a great job answering our questions since July, but I also just wanted to express my gratitude as well to all the work that went into this, not only by the Finance Department, but all the directors, the city manager, everyone that's involved in this process. So thank you all.
Anyone else? Counselor Kern.
Can I make a funny comment? I'm just really disappointed that I was a little...
A what comment?
A funny one.
Sure.
I'm just, I regret that I'm a little late to this party. I feel like I showed up when the wine was already poured and the bottle was empty. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to take the opportunity to thank you. I really appreciate it, and yeah, we did have some fun conversations through all of this. You know, that's important, though. I mean, it's important that a council takes this seriously. It's important that if we have perspectives, we share those. We made changes, we made compromises along the way, and I think that's important. The one gotcha I feel with this, and you pointed out at the very beginning, is I don't know how long that list is now, six items or whatever, whether it's the Marshall Fire or what Superior decides to do at the library, or whatever it is, that could very much alter all this. The 2C, the ballot issue, is a significant one, not only for funding open space and parks, but dealing with our public lands. So it never stops, right? So thank you very much. I think we're all prepared to address this on November 6th. Thank you, Director. And I'm closing in public hearing.
Do you like a motion? Are you ready, Mayor? No? Oh, there's no motion. What am I on? The next one.
If you look at page 441, there's a recommendation that we're okay with it, and we're going to be on November 6th. My last budget. All right, we're going to go on to regular item F. Ordinance number 1865, series 2023, and Northern Amendment Chapter 3.24 of the Louisville Municipal Code regarding the city's Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program. This is second reading and public hearing. I just want to note, this is something that we ask staff to come back with, which is really codifying something that the city has been doing. So I'm trying to simplify and streamline our discussion on this. So with that, we'll have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Counsel. Austin Brown for staff. Happy to be in front of you again tonight with this ordinance. The ordinance before you is an amendment to Title III of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning the city's Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program. The proposed ordinance would amend the city's BAT program to codify the city's practice of rebating consumer use taxes for new and expanding businesses. In 2007, the Louisville City Council adopted Louisville Municipal Code, Chapter 3.24, establishing the city's Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program, which authorizes rebates of certain taxes and fees to eligible businesses. Per the current program, the city can offer rebates on the following items for a period of up to 10 years or until a specified maximum amount is reached. Building permit fees, construction use tax, sales tax, and while it's not explicitly listed in the code, consumer use tax has historically been included in the program. The city's practice has been to rebate 50% of these fees and taxes for projects that participate in the BAT. At the time the Business Assistance Program was created, the city did not have a consumer use tax in place. In 2010, the city adopted a consumer use tax and has authorized rebates of this tax under the authority implied from the BAT. However, the city code was never formally amended to add consumer use tax. This proposal would amend Chapter 3.24 of the city code to specifically authorize rebates of the city's consumer use tax revenues. To achieve this, a definition of consumer use tax has been added, and the definition of fees has been expanded to include the amount of consumer use taxes collected. In addition to making this clarification in the code, the City Attorney's Office also recommended adding language to Chapter 3.24 requiring that businesses must remain open for 10 years following the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, or pay back 10% of assistance for each year out of the 10 that the business fails to remain open. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance Number 1865, series 2023, amending the city's Tax and Business Assistance Program. This concludes staff's presentation, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So I forgot to open the public hearing, so I'm going to retro that. Counselor Dickinson.
I said one question on the last part, the 10%. Is that new, the calculation of, I knew we had a clawback, but is the specific 10% per year that you don't finish the 10 years, is that new, or is that what we've always done?
So I think we've included something similar in agreements, but it hasn't been in the code, is my understanding.
Yeah, it kind of felt like it's like, oh, well, if you finish in less than, if you don't remain open for 10 years, we can, my brain had, we can claw it all back, but is it, is it, Rob, you're nodding, or I don't know?
I didn't mean to nod in an official, formal answer way, but I was thinking it was, it's always been 10% per year. It's never been the full thing.
Yeah, I just never remember seeing that, so I didn't know if we were at it. But that's more, again, codifying what we've basically been doing, that's not a change.
Right.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you. I think we're going to go to public, first round of public comments. Anybody in the chamber? No? Anybody on Zoom? No? Back to counsel. We will have one more round of public comment. No discussion, second round of public comment. Seeing none, we'll go back to counsel. Counselor Hefner.
I would move the passage of Ordinance Number 1865, series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 3.24 of the Louisville Municipal Code regarding the city's Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program.
We have a second from Counselor Lay. Discussion, closing public hearing. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Portamfahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you for your work on that. We're going to move on to regular business G, Amendment Number One to the 2023 pavement marking contract. I'll ask staff for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Kirk Carr, Public Works Utilities Director. Just enjoying my time next to Austin here while he works on the computer. If you have enough information to vote, you can give me a thumbs up, and we can move on, or I'll wait for Austin to finish up, and we can do a short presentation. I don't see any thumbs up, so we'll do a short presentation.
Well, let me ask, Counsel, do you feel that the packet was sufficient for a presentation? I'm getting a yes on that. Do you do a video I think we all would like to see?
We do have a video, yes, we do.
So this is the design of Polk?
So this is a video from Fort Collins, has done advisory bike lanes, and did a video on their advisory bike lanes to illustrate how that works.
Advisory bike lanes are coming to East Pitkin Street. As part of utilities and street maintenance project, East Pitkin Street will be restriped with advisory bike lanes from Remington Street to Smith Street in 2022. What are advisory bike lanes? Roads with advisory bike lanes have a single center travel lane that is shared by motor-vehicle drivers traveling in both directions. There are dashed advisory bike lanes on both sides of the street. Bicyclists have ride-of-way in the advisory bike lanes. After looking out for and yielding to bicyclists, drivers can merge into the bike lane in order to pass an oncoming driver. Drivers can then return to the center travel lane after passing. It might sound crazy at first, but advisory bike lanes work well on narrow, low-speed, low-traffic streets across the United States and around the world. This will be the first advisory bike lane in Fort Collins. If you've ever driven on a narrow neighborhood street, you already know how to drive on a road with advisory bike lanes. Narrow streets don't have enough room for two drivers and bicyclists to pass each other at the same time. On narrow streets, drivers have to be on the lookout for bicyclists, yield to them, and then find a gap in on-street parking where they can pull over and allow an oncoming vehicle to pass. Why advisory bike lanes on East Pitkin Street? Pitkin is a popular east-west bikeway connecting to CSU. The stretch of Pitkin between Remington and Smith currently has traditional bike lanes, but our hope is that advisory bike lanes will provide a safer, more comfortable place for bicyclists to ride, and that that will help to slow down vehicular traffic. This is the first advisory bike lane project in Fort Collins, so we will be evaluating it closely to make sure it works as intended. To learn more about the project, visit fcgov.com/pitkin.
There's one simple hearing.
Why'd you stop it?
We can keep going. I could do this all night.
Any questions for the director before we go to public comment? Okay, and you're done. Your card is...
All right. Josh Cooperman, I live in Louisville. I would like to really express my wholehearted support for city staff's recommendations about striping on Via Appia and on the Polk Dahlia. My primary reason for really supporting the ideas is that I think it will make these roads much friendlier to bicyclists and pedestrians, and also much safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. And I believe that the new striping will not unduly affect vehicular traffic, in particular on Via Appia. As I understand from having conversations with city staff, the amount of vehicular traffic that we have does not warrant two lanes in each direction, that one lane would be sufficient. And moreover, if we do this road diet by restriping Via Appia, emergency vehicles will still be able to pass safely because we won't actually be eliminating any road surface just restriping it. Furthermore, I think that this restriping really advances us on some of the goals set out in the Transportation Master Plan. In particular, for Via Appia, there are, I think, three different places in the list at the end of the Transportation Master Plan where it talks about buffered bike lanes and crossings and so forth. And I think this striping would help to advance us on all three of those points in the Transportation Master Plan. And developing those points was a big community process, so I would consider them to be very well-vetted by the community. On Polk Dahlia, there's really, I think, one point in the Transportation Master Plan that calls for establishing a bike route on that street, and I think the advisory bike lanes will do a great job there. I would like to say that my family and I lived in the Netherlands for two years, where they use advisory bike lanes extensively. I rode them all the time, and I think they're great, if that counts for anything. Yeah, and then, just to finish up, I wanted to tie into the comments that were made at the very beginning of the meeting when someone spoke up about crossing Via Appia. So I think this, in the packet, it talks about doing some signage with the restriping. If we could improve the signage at the crossing that the person spoke about, which is at Via Capri, I think, and Via Appia, that would be really great. Another place would be at Lafayette and Via Appia. I've had some conversations with people who live on the other side of, on the, kind of the north side there, I guess, of Via Appia, and they would like to see that crossing very much improved. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else public comments?
My name's Griffin Cook, and I live in Louisville, Colorado, in the Dutch Creek subdivision. This is my first time attending one of these meetings.
Welcome.
Me and my partner moved here a little over two years ago, and immediately fell in love with Louisville. I'm proud to say that we were able to narrowly avoid being priced out of buying here, so I plan on being here for quite a while. The one thing, when we moved here, we fell in love with the city immediately. One thing that we thought about is like, why is the city different? Why do people here? Why do people walk and bike around? Why do people actually spend time in a public space like Old Town here? That is not my experience when I grew up in Aurora, Colorado. You know, that's not something I've seen a whole lot of other places. And I think a lot of it is, generally speaking, the core of the community does not have any large, scary roads cutting through it, right? I cross Cherry to get to Old Town from where I live. I walk to Old Town probably twice a week to support local businesses, you know, get coffee with my friends, whatnot. And Cherry relatively to Via Appia is pretty safe and stress-free to cross. If I felt like I could not safely walk there, if I had any apprehension about that or felt like I had to drive, I would not visit Old Town nearly as often, and I think that's a big thing. And I think Via Appia unfortunately is kind of an exception to the rule that I've seen where most of the residents of Louisville can draw a line between them and... can draw a line between them and Old Town, which is one of the largest amenities here, where they don't have to cross a multi-lane, fast-moving road. And I do think that it's, it's a safety concern as well. And I just really, I think that, you know, anything we can do to make Via Appia a more kind road to pedestrians and cyclists, I think will really play to this community's strengths. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, on Zoom, we have Sheri Summer.
Sheri, it looks like you're speaking, but we can't hear you. You want to try again?
Does that work?
Yes, we're good.
Oh, great, okay, sorry. Sheri Summer, Lewisville resident. I've spoken to many people about traffic hotspots. Oh, first, I want to start out by saying thank you to the Public Works Department for doing such a great job with traffic calming in so many areas. It's been very appreciated by many residents. I have spoken to a lot of residents about concerns about traffic, and one of the hotspots is Via Appia. Children and older children, younger children are trying to cross there to get to school. Just generally, the traffic is speeding quite quickly, and that also creates a lot of noise. So I would rec, I would support staff's recommendation to change the configuration on Via Appia. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public comment. Council comments? Counselor Heffner?
Yeah, first thing, I think this is a great proposal, and I really appreciate the responsiveness to certainly a lot of the resident concerns that I've been getting about traffic safety. I, I just have, it's sort of a combo question-comment, which is, on the Via Appia cross-section, we have this 11-foot buffer on either side of the center median. And I, I wonder if we couldn't shrink that a little bit and make the separation for the bike lane a foot or two wider just to create a little extra space and a little extra separation? Since there's going to be dead space either way, it might make sense to put a little more of it between the cars and the bikes. Maybe you considered that, and there's a reason not to do it, but that's just my thought looking at this.
We can take a look at that. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. So I like the idea for Via Appia. Remind me, it's kind of similar to what we did on Cherry a while ago?
Yeah, essentially, we're doing what we did on Cherry on Via Appia.
Yeah, okay. In addition to the comments about the crosswalks, thinking about the Polk Dahlia corridor and the proposed bike lanes, I think those are a great idea as well. What's coming front of mind to me, and I know you mentioned it in the packet, but I have to say it out loud tonight, is education of the community. And e-bikes pops up into my mind again, and all the kids riding around on e-bikes and making sure that they understand as well how they participate in this new traffic pattern. So I don't know if that's a bigger item we need to address up here in addition to that, but that's a big concern for me. It's not a concern that says we shouldn't do this. It's a concern that says we just need to make sure we begin to address that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Lay?
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you for the video. That was nice. We don't usually give videos in this, in meetings, so it kind of felt, I don't know, just that was a good thing. What, one thing that I would say is that, that in the video, they did mention, in the Fort Collins example, the idea of coming back and evaluating it. I think that would be really good. In fact, I mean, I think generally speaking, the traffic calming would be a good thing to bring back for evaluation. I know that I probably say that maybe against my better judgment because I don't necessarily, you know, there's piling on sometimes with, with certain kinds of calming devices and, you know, some upset about that. But I don't know that it's necessarily a bad thing to review where we are on, on any kind of traffic area that we're having problems with, or we seem to have, you know, won or whatnot. But this one, I think it would be a good, because this is, you know, we've done this, I guess, in a couple of places. We ought to, we ought to evaluate it when the time comes. I'll leave that to you, but I would like, it would be nice to get some feedback on that at some point, if we choose to move forward, which I guess we'll find out.
Counselor Dickinson?
Does this need a motion, Amendment, Amendment Number One to the... Okay, so I'd move that we approve Amendment Number One to the 2023 Pavement Marking Contract?
Second.
And briefly speak in favor, I think this is great. I'm a little concerned about, you know, one street in Lewisville operating this way and sort of, you know, I can just picture driving on Pine, and you take a left, like, what's happening on this road? I've been on these roads. It do make sense? It's like one of those, like, just kind of brilliant things. Somehow this works? Just having one lane for two directions makes no sense, and yet it does, it works. So I think intuitively it'll work quite well, but I definitely think we're going to need a lot of education and signage around there, like, just realize this isn't a one-way street. But even then, like, if it were, and someone's coming the opposite direction, you solve that. You're like, oh, let's go around each other. So I think it'll be great. And then my only question on Via Appia, only thought is, we did this, as Councilmember Hamilton said, on Cherry. I've driven on Cherry, you know, 100 times since then. Works great every time for me. Have we gotten feedback? I know, like, we got like a lot of feedback on the left-hand turn off of Garfield onto South Boulder Road. Lots. Have we gotten any feedback negative around what we did on Cherry?
Yeah, every time we make a change, there's some feedback. Cherry had some of that, but essentially Cherry's been pretty quiet. We're actually getting more chatter that people feel like they want more on Cherry. They want cars to go slower. But we've had great comments from bicyclists, from pedestrians crossing on Cherry. So everyone's more comfortable and safer because of what we did, and that's just going to translate to Via Appia.
And so I just really feel like the Via Appia's going to go similarly, that like, there will be somebody like, what are they doing? Why are... And then after a month or so, it's like, this is fine. Like, we only need one lane each way. There's not a lot of traffic. And so I really support these two concepts. And like Councilmember Lay said, very interested to see what kind of feedback and studying the effects on Polk and if this makes sense on more, more of our roads than, than just this one. But it's great.
Thank you. City Clerk, did somebody second the motion? Okay, great. Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you, yes. I'll reiterate what everyone else has said. I think this is a great idea. Glad you came up with it. And I would like a lot of education, particularly, as Counselor Hamilton said, regarding e-bikes and the younger drivers that don't fully understand how to drive on a street to begin with. And then changing it just seems, we need a lot of education and then some evaluation of how well it's been working. But great idea. Thanks.
Counselor Kern?
Thank you. Thank you for putting the work into this. I'm very sorry, but I'd love to actually talk about my concerns. The accolades are apparent, right? It's, it's great. We're going to have, hopefully, safer bike access. I would rather see that there's a separation between traffic and biking. That's actually what creates safety. I backed to, my, my house was backed to McAslin for 26 years. I cannot tell you the number of people who have fallen off their bikes because debris hits them from cars because of that bike lane with the car. And I'm running out of my house with gauze and bandages and things like that. So my worry with Via Appia is there is not as little traffic as what we're thinking, that, that there are times of day where there is heavy enough traffic to warrant the lanes. The other comment that we've seen, I've heard a lot locally, is with the new medians that we put in, the way that we angled them. When you're coming in and out of Pine onto Via Appia, it's really hard to see traffic a lot of the time. So, so I'm, I had a couple things. The education point was going to be through the roof for me. I'd like to see that the whole community gets the video, how we use this. How do you turn left and right? But I, so I ride on a lot of different bike trails around the whole country, and there's stop signs and yields and things like that for the cyclists. I was curious to know, where are we, since there's not traffic lights on Via Appia with people who are turning, like, crossing? Let's say, coming from Pine and turning left on Via Appia toward McAslin, probably heavily made turn. It's already kind of difficult, you're crossing two lanes of cars and into two more lanes of cars. So now, as a driver, we have to look for the cyclist, who is very hard to see. We don't require them to have specific, like, flashing lights or headlights, especially if it's early morning or, you know, at this time of year, toward the end of the day when it's getting dark, it's going to be hard to see somebody. And I'm worried that we're doing something to improve bike safety and could inadvertently create harm. I'm also concerned, from the driver's perspective, just how much more difficult this is, because that's such a heavily-used road by a lot of the locals who live in that area. Having lived there, I, that's actually a lot of heavy traffic for me, too. I have to admit. I just was hoping we could address the, the cars turning, being able to see the bikes, the cyclists, seeing pedestrians as they cross a crosswalk and making sure that they understand the pedestrian has the right of way before a cyclist does in a crosswalk. That's good education. And thank you so much, Councilmember Lay. I would love if there's an opportunity for us to revisit in this future. It's a lot of money to invest in these lanes. If it doesn't work and any of my concerns are realized and the community is like, hmm, can we, can we get our, our two lanes back and just widen our paths on the side that work as a pedestrian and bike path? That might be better. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to comment?
Sure. I'll try to remember and rattle down. So education, we're already working on education. This is some of the educational materials that we will put out to this neighborhood and to the city through our social media channels and other channels. Ginger Cross is working on this with Public Works. Thank you, Adam, for letting us borrow Ginger. And she does live in this neighborhood, so she kind of understands what's going on. So a lot of PR, a lot of campaign. We are going to work on a video for Lewisville, a Lewisville video like Fort Collins, so that'll be available. We plan to have sandwich boards along the corridor when this is first installed. We plan, as Public Works, to be out on the street with vests at like the school zone for drop-off to be answering questions. And just kind of like a, a full-on engagement and embed in the community to kick this off, per se. City Council has a work plan on transportation later next year. It's probably an ideal time to see how things went. If you, let's work with the ultimate fear. We install it, and it's just chaos and disaster. We do view this as a pilot. We can go out there and black out the striping we put down and go back to what is normal. One of the reasons we've gone to this solution is because this street is not wide enough to accommodate parking and sidewalks and bike lanes. So this is a way to make it a complete street with limited width. As far as Via Appia, we have bike lanes on Via Appia now with the current traffic. The lane reduction is going to reduce the number of lanes that people have to cross to go across Via Appia, so there's a level of comfort there. It'll reduce the number of lanes that bikes will have to go across. There are details, we've shown you concepts, but now that we know that we have your support, there's details that we'll work on at some of the various crossings to put maybe delineators at the crossings to create simple barriers for people crossing. And then we may do additional details at intersections where there's left turns, like the green thermo that really says, hey, this is where bikes belong in this area. So those are details that we'll consider with this feedback on the final plan for that. I think I answered everyone's questions. Did I miss anything? The traffic volume on Via Appia, two lanes in either direction can handle 35,000 cars per day. One lane in either direction can handle 42s doing like 22,000 cars per day. Up by South Boulder Road in Via Appia, it's about 7,000 cars per day. And down by McAslin in Via Appia, it's about 4,000 cars per day. So 4,000, 7,000 versus it can handle 20 for one lane in each direction. So we've got plenty of volume there. Rush hour, you may be a little bit more inconvenienced as a driver. But then I guess, I would throw it back on you. You're worried about inconveniencing drivers, but yet you want me to provide safety for bikes and convenience for bikes. Ultimately, if we're going to share roads, there's a trade-off here, and you got to decide what you want to be as a community. Sometimes you can't have both. So right now, we're prioritizing bikes and people, which I think is the trend we're hearing from the community.
Counselor Hamilton?
Director Blackmore, did you want to make a comment about the berms going off of Pine?
Sure, I'd love to. Yeah, so we have engaged services after an evaluation of those two berm walls turning left from Pine on to Via Appia that they should be lowered. And so the contractor, who's doing the work on the McAslin medians now, once they're wrapped up with that portion of their project, they'll be moving over and dropping those about 16 to 18 inches. So that should help with their sightlines.
Thank you. And my question is, you've done such a great job engaging the families along the Polk Dahlia corridor through many conversations and surveys. Has this idea been presented to them at any point in time, this concept? I know we could always go back and, you know, it doesn't work, go back to where it is right now, but I'm curious about that.
We have not. We have not gone into the neighborhood and said, hey, what do you think? We think this is something that's a pilot that we just need to try. And we think that if we go through a what-do-you-think process, it's something that feels hard to understand on paper, but probably intuitive when you use it. Someone said that. And we just need to go through this piece of the process as this pilot in Lewisville. It has benefits for so many roads throughout Lewisville, and this is a really ideal candidate. So we want to install it. It accommodates all the goals of the neighborhood. Maybe it doesn't look like what they thought they wanted. I don't think they knew what they wanted. They just wanted bike lanes, and they wanted bigger, wider sidewalks and bumpouts everywhere. And $5 million later, you know, we get something done. So this was our response to say, hey, we're going to try this, and it achieves your goals. And then we'll work with the neighborhood through this as we implement, and people learn.
Will the speed bumps remain?
Yeah, speed bumps remain. And then actually, we're adding a raised crossing at, an asphalt raised crossing at the four-way Madison Crossing that was a controversial location. It's, it's actually something that we all saw in Hawaii, and we brought it back from Hawaii when we were out there. So we think it's a really good solution, and it also has a lot of, I think, solutions throughout the town. And also, we have to work through this installation with the fire department and make sure that it's good for their response times. But we think it's a solution that doesn't slow down response times and can be utilized elsewhere in the city for much cheaper than concrete raised crossings. So that's another benefit in some of this as well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to make one last comment, and I'll let, let you talk. So I live on Cherry. I cycle a lot. It's much safer crossing or getting to the other side of Cherry for cyclists, because you only have one car going each way, which was really a problem when you would have, like, somebody turning and whatever. It's, it's a much better design. And so cyclists and pedestrians, I believe, are our primary concern for safety. And so I, I support these. One question I have for the city clerk. Can we do a voice vote on this? Okay. Counselor Heffner?
I just wanted to chime in with a word of thanks for the bike lanes you already did on South Madison. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on those in the, what has it been, two weeks since they've been in? Which I think partly answers Counselor Hamilton's question about community support. I think it's there, and I think this is consistent with a lot of the things you and I both heard at the community meeting.
Counselor Kern?
I'm sorry, I thought of one other issue. I apologize. I know, it's, it sounds like really great. I just want to hope, and I, and like, you're an incredibly brave person, so I really appreciate the work on this. What about the intersection when Via Appia ends at South Boulder Road? We've already eliminated the right turn on red
We've already eliminated the right turn on red because of the danger with that. That's two lanes. That right lane now backs up a good eight cars deep on a regular basis. So if we're taking that to one lane from two, because you have the left turn lane and the right, and the right one backs up now until the traffic goes, and we're now down to one, have we thought about how just one lane and now there's not a right and a left, everybody has to be sitting, and how long that's going to be, and what that backup's going to look like? And the bike impact, too, for that?
Yeah, the, um, how do you do the laser on this?
They expand at the intersections.
I'm sorry, I must have, I missed.
I can't, I don't know how this laser works, but, oh, on this side.
You just said you're bright again.
No, it's too many buttons. We have two lanes, we have a left turn lane at the intersection, we have a right turn lane. The bike lane then goes in between those. It's kind of weird, but that's how the standards work for the manual and uniform traffic control devices. You do still, when we get to intersections, we still provide the lineage necessary for the various turning movements and queuing that needs to take place. We'll certainly double and triple-check the right turn lane length. Obviously, with all that yellow hatching there, we have a lot of flexibility, so we're aware of that. There's also, we have to kind of worry about the bus stop in that area as well. So, there's a lot of details, again, you guys are looking at concepts, and we got to flush out, like, really detailed stuff. But if this just was a no-go, then we didn't want to burn staff time on that.
So, before we do a voice, voice vote, voice vote, Director Bailey, you're going to have to add $250,000 to the expenditure budget. Okay.
This is within current budgets that you've already adopted. We're not asking for more money tonight, we're just using underruns from being responsible with, with this year's budget.
Did we previously do the additional authorization?
Yes. That was the previous authorization, was your 2023 striping budget. This new approval, if you all approve it, is an additional $250,000 to striping, but it's under total paving and striping budgets for the year. You'll actually be putting $50,000 back into your capital fund. So you're, you're making money a little bit.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye? Okay. Unanimous vote?
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item H, executive session, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to introduce the item.
Thank you, mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the mayor is requesting an executive session for discussion of annual performance evaluations of the city attorney, water attorney, and municipal judge pursuant to Section 5-2B of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024F. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public while in executive session. It is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep bennets, or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council or other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, and legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2B of the Home Rule Charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of reviewing the performance of employees directly appointed by the city council. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024F of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves evaluations for the city attorney, water attorney, and municipal judge, who are all employees directly appointed by the city council. With that, mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session for consideration of performance reviews and evaluations.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of performance review of employees directly appointed by the city council, and that the executive session include city attorney Kathleen Kelly, except for the portion regarding the performance of the city attorney. A roll call vote, please.
Second. My second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Portemfehi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
City Council will now adjourn for executive session. City council will now adjourn for executive session. City council will now adjourn for executive session. City council will now adjourn for executive session.